Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I'd like to welcome, we have two new alternates this evening. We have Mark Salinger and Andy Meek are joining us as the new alternates. For this meeting, we're going to have Gary Belkey seated as the alternate, Lynn Conway, Fred Deckman, myself, Ben Filbrick, Ryan Deasy and Chuck Sheehan, and Andy Meek is the alternate. Let's move ahead with the minutes.
Motion to approve?
Seconded.
Any discussion? Very good. Thank you. So moved. Staff?
There is no correspondence. Your zoning enforcement report is in your file at the very end. Other than that, we can move on to administrative review items?
Yes, please.
Is there anyone here for Alamo LLC? If that be the case, I'll go ahead with it. Alamo LLC from Special Use Permit 0737 is requesting a five-year extension to Special Use Permit and Coastal Area Management Review for the conversion of an existing structure into offices, construction of a two-story 30 by 66-foot addition into 4,950 square foot one-story building, including associated parking, drainage and associated site improvements. The property is located at 19 Old Stonington Road, Stonington, Connecticut, Assessors Map 153, Block 1, Lot 2, Zone GC60. The permit is for the construction of a two-story addition to an existing commercial building and construction of a new one-story commercial building at 19 Old Stonington Road. No construction has begun at this time. Per state statutes, special use permits are usually valid for only five years unless all work has been completed. Through Public Act 1105, approved in 2011, the state granted additional time for applicants to complete projects in light of the economic recession. The applicant received approval from this commission in 2016, which allowed the permit a total lifespan of 14 years. Per Public Act 21-16, which is attached to your staff report, approved in the 2021 legislation session, is now allowed for an additional five years to complete a site plan special permit, subdivision and inland wetlands approval, for a total of not more than 19 years. Staff is not aware of any reason not to approve the extension request.
Do we hear a motion?
Motion to approve the extension?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved.
Is there anyone here from Toll Brothers? Seeing no one, staff will continue. Zoning Permit 21-170 for the Toll Connecticut Limited Partnership requested to clear and grade on Lot 43 as shown on a lot grading plan sheet to a four of last revised, 11/19/20. The property is located in the old Mystic Estates Nautilus Way, Map 165, Block 5, Lot 14H, Zone RA40. The lot grading was modified quite some time ago, however, never approved officially. Allegedly, a verbal discussion took place between the former town engineer and the previous Toll management that was controlling operations. However, nothing was memorialized. The changes in grade were brought to staff's attention by the Stonington Land Trust, and staff and Toll Brothers thought it best to memorialize the changes should a question ever arise down the road. You can see in the staff report, the approved grading and the proposed grading. The proposed grading has been approved by Chris Greenlaw. In the review of the aforementioned application, plan and latest report by the applicant's consulting engineer, SESI, I recommend action be taken by the commission with the stipulation that the recommendations as outlined in the SESI letter be accomplished to the satisfaction and approval of the town engineer and/or zoning enforcement officer. Staff is recommending approval with two stipulations. Recommendations as outlined in the SESI letter dated 11/10/2021 are to be completed to the satisfaction and approval of the town engineer and/or zoning enforcement officer. And number two, final as-built or improvement location survey is to include the changes approved under permit Zone 21-170. If you want to see a copy of the SESI letter, it's on the next page.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Does the more extensive grading plan precipitate any changes to the sediment erosion control plan at all?
If you read the SESI letter, changes were put in the way the entire slope is being constructed. As-built is going to have to show that it is constructed in the manner that is proposed and has been approved by the town engineer. The reason why this has come in front of you is because it's not what was approved originally.
I understand that. I saw the before and after thing. I just think that what we ought to do is put a condition in here that if any changes are required to the sedimentation and erosion control plan, that they actually be implemented. It's more extensive. The slopes look like they're steeper where it matches existing grade, and I just want to make sure that there's no offsite impacts as a result of the more extensive grading.
Want to make that the third stipulation?
Sure.
I'm sorry?
Make that the third stipulation.
So the stipulation would be that the sedimentation erosion control plan should be approved by the town engineer?
There we go.
And I move approval, Mr. Chairman, as submitted.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Three stipulations. Thank you. And we're tabling the next one, the old business, Candy?
Yes. The applicant has requested it be moved to the December 7 meeting as they went out ready.
Okay. Moving on to old business with?
And, yes, we are on to the Toll Brothers bond?
Yes.
Reduction request? And again, Toll Brothers, no one is here. Okay, the original bond amount was for $2,935,000. It was reduced on June 26, 2012. They reduced again in 2018, May 15, to $1,125,000. This request is to further reduce the bond by $814,710, leaving a balance of $310,290. The town engineer has reviewed the entire site bond and has no problems with the reduction. The Department of Planning is recommending partial reduction, and should the commission deny this request, the reasons must be stated in the denial and a response must be sent in writing for Connecticut General Statutes, Section 8-3G1.
Thank you. Will you hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Seconded, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any discussion, questions?
Town engineer has provided a detailed estimate of the items remaining to be completed. It appears to be very much in order.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So moved.
Now it's all yours.
Next one, C?
Item number PG 2131, Site Plan Approval of a Rock Street Realty Associates Tesla Site Plan Application to Permit the Installation of Electric Vehicle Charging Stations and Supporting Equipment. Property located in 12 Pugin Boulevard Mystic, Assessors Map 164, Block 4, Lot 1, Zone TC80. Is there anyone here from Tesla? I believe there is.
Good evening, everyone. So Tesla's been building supercharging for just roughly over two decades now. We have over 30,000 stalls nationwide. We're looking at actually creating another site here in Mystic that will alleviate the congestion coming off of 95. So our goal is to build plaza shopping malls that could get, you know, take commuters off of the freeway into a plaza. They can patientize that area and continue their commute. On average, it's about 30 minutes of a charge time, so they have 30 minutes to dwell in there, shop, eat, get back and roll up and fuel up. We did receive all the comments from the board here, and we're able to make sure that we abide by those and our bills as well.
Could you, when you speak again, speak into the microphone, make sure?
I'll stop.
Yeah, thank you. I think we're live. Yeah, it sounds live. Well, this, are there any questions from the board? No question?
No. I'm curious, just with the location, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I'm curious on the location with signage off the road to direct people into the charging station.
So all of our signs, we don't normally have Tesla signs that would direct vehicles off of the road into the plaza. All of Tesla's UI is integrated, so our drivers would know exactly where the location is on property. So once they put an address in, the UI automatically routes them to that area. Once they get there, there are signage that says Tesla vehicle charging allowed or available here, and those will be on property, but there will be no signs in front of the property indicating that there's a Tesla charging station here.
And also curious about the lighting around the, I mean, at night, do you have adequate lighting for the station? It's kind of looks like it's up the hill a bit, so tucked away.
Absolutely. So all of the lighting is metered directly to Tesla, and so we'll keep the lighting on. Of course, you know, it's ran off of a sensor, so if it kind of like gets dark, that lighting automatically comes on as well.
Have you seen all the town engineer's conditions that he placed on this? They're not very extensive, but?
Correct.
You know, things like identifying underground utilities and issues such as that. Have you seen all those conditions?
Correct. We've seen all the conditions, so our design team is willing to draft up the appropriate mapping showing all of the conditions adding into the mapping for our CD90s and CD100s.
So you agree with all of them?
Correct. We agree with all the conditions. Correct.
I would make a motion to approve the application with all of the town engineer's stipulations.
All those in favor?
On discussion. You know, this probably ought to be an item of interest as we update our zoning regulations. I think we'll be getting more requests like this, and there should be standards, I think, in the zoning regulations for things like charging stations. We may not want them all located in the front yard, such as this one is, you know, immediately in front of a commercial establishment there. There may be more optimal locations for these things. Since we don't have any standards, it's hard to enforce on this applicant, but we can expect to see a lot more of this type of application, and I think the new zoning regulations should address it.
Good point.
Having said that, I'm in favor of this application.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Thanks, sir.
Item D, PG 2132, Site Plan Modification for BC MAN LLC, Tony Nanna, applicant. Site Plan Modification, application for the revisions and modifications for the stormwater infiltration system in the rear of the property. Previously approved application is PG 1904. Site Plan Approval, property located at 62 Volantown Road, Pawtucket, Assessors Map 18, Block 2, Lot 7, Zone HI60. Mr. Nanna is here to explain his application.
Thank you again for the record, Tony Nanna with On-Site Engineering. So we were originally back in front of the planning board and got approval in March for the building expansion for the garage and office building, and during the summer, he finished construction. And during one of the inspections by the fire chief, he, Mr. Manfred deals with a lot of large vehicles, trailer trucks, and to get maneuver around the building and to park some of the cars in the back, it was blocking the fire lane. So the existing or the original drainage system that was proposed was going to push the cars further towards the building and blocking the fire access. So I came up with a modified site plan that's in front of you to try to get the drainage in a stone infiltration area versus what was originally approved. And I sat down with the town engineer a few times to go over that. He basically wanted me to come up with a, to address the water quality, which I believe in the letter that he sent out, recommended approval and that I work with him administratively to work through the drainage revisions.
And you're comfortable with that situation?
Yes.
Any other questions, the applicant? Chuck?
No questions.
You sure?
Positive. Very complete sound. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
And a very nice presentation also.
You're welcome, ma'am.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the application?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
All righty. All right, Candy, we're all done, correct?
It's all yours.
So moving on to the public hearing, seated tonight will be the same as the beginning of the hearing. We have Gary Belkey as the alternate, Lynn Conway, Fred Deckman, myself, Ben Filbrick, Ryan Deasy and Chuck Sheehan. There hopefully is a sign-up sheet in the front of the building?
Yes, there is.
Perfect. And those who wish to speak in favor should sign in on that one, and those who oppose should sign in on that sheet. So what we'll do is have the applicant give their presentation, at which point we will have some conversation during, if it's all right with the applicant, we can have questions of your various presenters as we roll along.
That's fine with me. Great.
Then we'll have the public opinion section opened up for those who want to speak in favor, those who are opposed, general comment, leaving time for rebuttal by the applicant. And then the board will have, and alternates can have questions at that point of the applicant. And then we will have questions by the staff, their input, excuse me, the input by the staff, if there's such input to be had. Then the meeting will be closed if we have time by 11 o'clock. If not, we will continue the discussion at our next meeting, but I am trying to get it done by 11:00. We'll see how it goes. Then we will close the hearing, and the board will vote to discuss it and vote. So that may have to happen at our next meeting, depending on how we are with time. Everybody all set with the ground rules? All yours, David.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to open up the meeting?
Yes, I'm sorry. Yes, you need to read the call. I got ahead of myself.
That's all right.
Big excitement.
It's a very important job. Pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, November 16, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. on the following application: PG 2129 RA, Latizori Development, Zoning Text Amendment, Master Zone, excuse me, Master Plan Zone Change, and Site Plan Applications to amend, ZR 7.23.6.2, Residential Density to allow 15 units per acre for conventional residential Subzone 3 only. Increase the area of Subzone 3 by 5.81 acres to 16.33 acres. Reduce the size of Subzone 4 by 5.81 acres to 8.3 acres. And increase the proposed gross floor area in Subzone 4 to 120,000 square feet for construction of a 72,000 square foot addition to the medical building. A four-story, 124-unit apartment community is also proposed under the RA and ZC applications. No SPA. Properties located at 100 Perkins Farm Drive, 50 Perkins Farm Drive, and additional parcels of Perkins Farm Drive, Mystic Assessors Map 134, Block 3, Lots 2 and 4, and Assessors Map 150, Block 2, Lots 2, 3, 4, 5, 8 and 9, Zone GDD1.
Thank you, Lynn. Mr. Ladwick?
Mr. Chairman, Commission members, for the record, I am Theodore Ladwick. I'm an attorney practicing law in Stonington. I have an office in Pawtucket, and I reside in Stonington as well. At the Island Wetlands Commission Site Walk on October 30th, a rainy Saturday morning, I heard someone say, I believe it was the chairman, Lee Reichert, but I heard someone say, "It's good to see the site design working as it was proposed." Always nice to hear that. I think that could be said for the entire Perkins Farm complex. You'll hear more of that from others tonight. In 2015, Latizori Development had three choices. One, they could apply for an affordable housing project under Connecticut General Statutes 8.30G. Density would have been conservatively 800 to 1,000 units on 70 acres. No open space. They chose not to take this path. Their second choice was they could develop the 36 single-family house lots and/or sell the approved subdivision. They were within weeks of doing so when Mr. Latizori, David Latizori, met a medical doctor at Stone Ridge who suggested he develop a geriatric medical campus on the Perkins Farm property. That was the path chosen, but it was not an easy one. Several combinations of uses were considered. Finally, a combination of residential and medical uses was proposed. As David Rathbun, a former chair of this commission, perceptively noted at the time, "You need the residential to pay for the infrastructure for the medical." That was true then, and it's true now. In order to finance and construct expensive medical facilities, a residential component is needed. There is not enough land to provide for additional medical with affordable housing and 35 acres The application resulted in the Greenway Development District, and I'm not going to go through the permitting process because that's been extensively covered in the staff report very well, I believe. The Greenway Development District was approved in 2016. Its stated purpose was open space preservation and economic development by allowing a mixture of uses to promote successful development. The permitting process is covered in the staff report. The Greenway Development District allowed preservation of 50% of the total site. Total preserved was 35.82 acres as open space. It provided for neighborhood housing, 50 townhouses on 7.7 acres, village housing, 122 apartment units on 10.52 acres, and professional development or medical offices, 100,000 square feet on 14.1 acres. What we are proposing tonight is a map and master plan amendment and a zoning text amendment to allow 120,000 square feet of professional development or medical on 8.2 acres, additional 123 apartment units on 16.3 acres, no change to the neighborhood housing of 7.7, and no change to the preservation district of 35 acres of open space. Tonight, you'll hear from Dave Latizori regarding the completed development, Gene Winchester regarding the medical development, Don Poland regarding municipal fiscal impact, Dave Sullivan regarding traffic, Todd Ritchie on engineering, and Rob Goodman and Tim Wentz regarding the architectural design. And Jim Cowan is also here to discuss any wetland issues that may come up. I will not steal their thunder, except to say, I have been a patient at the Hartford Healthcare Facility. The access and parking were convenient. The waiting area overlooked the open space and was beautiful. It added immeasurably to the experience. The examination room was up to 21st century standards, as you might imagine for Hartford Healthcare. These facilities give Stonington residents and the surrounding southeastern Connecticut area world-class choices and options in medical facilities and housing. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Latizori. David?
I am David Latizori, the owner of Latizori Development and the Perkins Farm Campus. Up here before you is the 36 Lads subdivision, which was approved as of right for this site. It only preserved 15% of the properties as open space. It was comprised of 36 single-family houses on one-acre lots with around eight curb cuts out onto Jerry Brown Road. And I was one week from selling this to a home builder, and a resident at Stone Ridge, a doctor approached me and said, "Is there something better you can do with this site?" And I went back to my family, and I said, "I think really there's something is, there is something we can do better." I'm not an out-of-touch, out-of-town developer. I've grown up in this town my entire life, and after taking care of my dad from age 21 till when he passed away at age 27, I brought him to healthcare facilities all throughout multiple states. In addition, I came back and I gave up top jobs in New York to come back and take care of my father and our family business, and there was no housing here for people like myself. And in addition, I always heard concerns about maintaining the rural character of Jerry Brown Road. So I said, "What is the highest and best use for this site?" And what we came up with was the Greenway Development District, and that preserved over 50% of the property as open space. And as you can see from our previously approved master plan, it effectively provided three different types of uses. Preservation, number one, village housing, neighborhood housing, and professional development. You can see the four different types of uses here, and the largest use, of course, is the green space along Jerry Brown Road. And if you note that all that green space is pretty much continuous, and the idea and the thought process behind that was to establish wildlife corridors and maintain the rural character of Jerry Brown Road. This project has really exceeded all of my expectations. It went from a project that I didn't think we could ever get approved, that after going through five public hearings, I think we have something that I hope the town can be proud of in this commission. I was also surprised at how quickly it sold out and how well it did with limited adverse impacts on the surrounding neighborhood. So what we're proposing tonight is to expand upon the most successful aspects of the site. Number one, that's the medical care, which has provided expanded medical care to this region, as well as housing. So what we're asking is to condense Subzone 4 professional development to allow for one larger building for ease of access for our patients, so they don't have to go in and out of multiple buildings. And we're also asking on the remaining land left over, which is the most secluded area of the site, for an additional second phase of the apartments. It should be noted that I'm allowed to build 15 units per acre of senior housing. However, with this text amendment, we're requesting a variation that will allow 15 units of market rate housing. So the density is the same, but the use is changing slightly, and the idea is that we can build upon the success of our current phases. Just quickly, what has been developed so far? We developed a 47,000-square-foot state-of-the-art ambulatory care center for Hartford Healthcare. It houses full imaging, multiple specialists, primary care. It really has become a destination for quality health care in this region. When COVID-19 first set up, I worked with Hartford Healthcare to set up the first COVID-19 testing center in this town, and they were also the first facility in this town to offer vaccinations to the public. Construction was supposed to take 18 months. We completed it in nine months. It was supposed to take two years to be fully occupied, and it was fully, it was overcapacity, overcapacity prior to construction. We also developed 121-unit apartment complex. It was named apartment community of the It was named Apartment Community of the Year Award by Connecticut Apartment Association, which governs all apartment communities in the state of Connecticut. Although we opened the first week of the shutdown, we were sold out in six months. It was expected to take 24 months to construct this building and all the supporting infrastructure, and we completed it in 13 months. It was expected to take potentially 18 months to lease up, and we leased it in six months. And we've been sold out since. We also developed 50 townhouses next door called Perkins Reserve. The home builder won Home Builder of the Year Award in Connecticut for this development. It was supposed to be constructed over a five-year period, sold out over three and a half years. The final building will be complete in around a month and a half, and the entire project was sold out in less than a few years. I want to go into some of the achievements that we've achieved with this campus. Number one, which I think is our greatest achievement, which is over 50% of the property is preserved as open space. It should be noted that all the areas we developed were actually old hayfields that have been overgrown by succession growth and were overgrown with invasive species. And we've gone in, and we've cleared all those out, and we've replanted them with wildflower native pollinator fescue mixes. And we've taken out all the invasives, and I'm currently working with an invasive species specialist to monitor invasive species plant life that's coming into our site. And we've been doing that for the last few years, and we'll continue to do it. Like I said, these were all fields, so we actually didn't have to remove a lot of trees. We removed 32 mature trees. However, we planted over 250 trees. By the end of this project, we'll have planted over 500 trees, as well as thousands of other native ornamental plantings. Over 90%, we made an effort to preserve over 90% of the stone walls on this site, and we have reconstructed over 3,500 feet of these stone walls. If you go by Jerry Brown Road these days, it looks a little bit different. We have reconstructed over 2,000 feet of old field stone wall over a month period, and I met with my stonemason, and we helped, I helped design every 10-foot section of it. And I think it's gone a long way towards maintaining that rural character. One of the very things I'm also proud of is that the Greenway Development District, which we developed and drafted for this site, variations of it have been used to preserve farmland all over town. Stone Acres Farm is a good example. The Valenti Farm down the road is also another example. And I know other wineries and other farms that are coming up with creative uses to preserve and maintain our farms into the future. I want to note that all our buildings are green energy buildings. They soon will have solar panels installed on them, as well as we've retrofitted a lot of our garages for electric charging stations. And the next phase will be even more green with more solar panels, as well as more electric charging stations. In addition, the construction was designed in a way to attenuate highway noise for our residents and also for residents on the other side of Jerry Brown Road. We did an acoustical analysis, which showed that highway noise is less after the development than before on the south side of Jerry Brown Road. In addition, we worked with Eversource and our neighbors over at Stone Ridge for a period of two years to develop a reliability project for energy reliability in our area. The power used to go out all the time, and because now we have a critical mass of development, we now have a completed energy loop. So if power goes out on one end, we can flip the switchgear, and power comes back on. And out of all these storms, we've never lost power once. Lastly, we've created over 100 jobs, 300 construction jobs. We have a state-of-the-art healthcare facility that I think during these post-COVID times is very important. We have housing that addresses post-COVID work-from-home needs, and the second phase will address that with even more work-from-home spaces. Lastly, we are on our way to become the largest taxpayer in town, and the second phase will double the fiscal impact of this project. Lastly, I just want to say the main benefits of the final phase of the Perkins Farm Campus is because now we're joining the two developments together. It allows us to more easily steward the open space until we complete construction, and hopefully, land conservation can take ownership of it. We've also created new linkages through the open space. Every development on this parcel is linked by nature trails, and we will be adding more with the second phase. All utilities are already installed. That will service the entire site, so we don't have to bring new utilities into this location. There'll be no more impacts on Jerry Brown Road. And in addition, we're utilizing some of the stormwater management structures that we've already constructed for the second phase, so the impacts will be negligible. Lastly, this, by finalizing the campus, it creates a critical mass and economies of scale, which allow us to attract and retain and maintain the best staff and vendors and talent at our site. You may find it hard to believe, we're a little bit off the beaten path, but this will allow us to really maintain that high level of service we've been giving our residents and patients. And lastly, new housing will help, you know, provide more diversity of housing options to this town, and the medical services and housing will ring new spending dollars to this community. And although I think this project has been quite successful thus far, and we've received quite a bit of accolades, the one that I'm most proud of is, I was walking through Mystic, and I got stopped by one of the patriarchs of the Perkins family. And he just said, "You know what, Dave? You did an absolutely phenomenal job with this campus, and we can't be more proud that is named in our honor. And if anyone asks you if the Perkins family is in support of it, we are 100%. So sometimes you bet the farm on the farm, and hopefully, it turns out all right." So after that, I'd like to hand it over to Dr. Eugene Winchester, who helped me establish
Good evening. Can everybody hear me? We sometimes get a bit nostalgic for the good old days in healthcare, when the relationship would be with one physician. So you would have one brain and one bag, and they would definitely do their best. But speaking as a physician, it's good that those good old days are done, because the future is large groups, primary and specialty physicians collaborating, sharing resources, sharing a medical record, having access to the best technology that can be afforded, CAT scans, MRIs, ultrasound. So really, the team approach is proving itself in helping early diagnosis, early treatment, and moving resources to the community so as to decrease barriers to care. On all of those metrics, Perkins Farm has really excelled. And my wife and myself are both patients there. In fact, we were both there this afternoon. So any sort of individual endorsement, you just got it. So care is transitioning from the big boxes of the hospital to the community, along with high-tech resources. And I can tell you that over the years that I've been in practice, so much of what used to be done in the hospital in terms of exploratory surgery and bringing people in for tests, that's very much gone. Looking at Perkins Farm and the resources that are presently there, there's a great deal, and it's the highest quality. But much more is needed. So there's an excellent cardiology department, but there is no pulmonary department, and the heart and lungs have to work together. And sometimes the medications that are best for the heart can have an adverse impact on the lungs. So bringing in many more resources to bear into the community is really important. And again, by decreasing barriers to care for earlier diagnosis and treatment closer to home, patients benefit. The main thing these days is coordination of care, so as to minimize duplication of services, minimize medical errors, and really speed up diagnosis and treatment. And these physicians here work closely with hospital-based physicians to optimize the continuum, continuum, excuse me, of care. So the second building will provide the critical mass of doctors supported by state-of-the-art diagnostic and treatment modalities, increase patient exposure to advanced medical care. It will become more of a destination for state-of-the-art medical care across our region, and will create a virtuous circle by attracting new people, new practitioners to the community, while further improving care, further improving real estate values, and having a positive impact on the tax base. Thank you.
Gee, one quick question.
Yes.
So how would you distinguish this proposed facility from a traditional hospital? I mean...
I'm sorry, Fred, from a traditional hospital?
Yeah. I mean, it looks pretty close to me.
Well, as we continue, more and more services and more and more specialists will be available at places like Mystic. Now, obviously, any sort of major surgery has to be done in the hospital. But not too long ago, in order to have an MRI, you had to go to a hospital, and now it's brought to the community.
No long-term care, or is there, is it, is it, is it, is it long-term care here?
Well, long-term care is its own niche, and some hospitals that...
That might be the wrong choice of words.
Sorry.
If I were to show up there with a problem of significant proportions, would I be housed there, or would I be shipped on to Westerly Hospital, or L&amp;M, or one of those?
Well, to pick one example, if you had an appointment with your cardiologist because you had some chest discomfort, and the cardiologist determined that you required a cardiac catheterization, or God forbid, you had an acute heart attack just at that point, you would be transferred probably to the nearest hospital.
Okay. That's, that's certainly where I wanted to go. Thank you.
Any other questions, please? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Donald Poland with Don Poland Consulting. I'm a planning and land use consultant, for the record, based in East Hampton, Connecticut, 72 Old West High Street. Here before you tonight in regard to the municipal fiscal impacts of this project, for those of you that were present in 2016, I issued a report on the initial master plan addressing the municipal fiscal impacts. And essentially, for this project, I issued an update memo, and I believe the 2016 report is also part of the record. Just want to provide a quick summary and then let you know that I will be available for questions. So the modifications to the master plan, first and foremost, this is ultimately being driven by the marketplace. The, prior to COVID, and now kind of during or into post, from a commercial office pays perspective, medical office has been the strongest asset class in most of the markets across the state. This will ultimately form...
Excuse me for a minute, Mr. Dr. Poland. Would you mind speaking more clearly, or remove your mask if you don't mind?
Sure. Actually, I forgot I had it on.
Much better. Thank you.
Thanks. So, and in addition, the changing demographics of the town of Stonington, changing demographics of the state of Connecticut have been driving a shift in the residential housing market towards the multifamily market over the single family. If you go back to around 2006, only about 24% of houses constructed were multifamily housing units. Today, statewide, approximately 47% of the market share is multifamily. So you have the market driving these. Ultimately, this development will form a medical cluster with a community-focused healthcare to make Stonington a more desirable place to work year-round and to age year-round, to live and work year-round. Creates a diversity of housing to meet workforce demands generated by the increase in contracts and jobs at Electric Boat, as well as providing housing for baby boomers who are downsizing. It's actually very common to see this downsize from ownership into rental properties. And provides amenities that can be used by the entire community while increasing wealth and spending power within the town. So essentially, for the municipal fiscal impacts, we use the same approach that we used in the 2016 and just provide a summary of updating the numbers. What was great about this update is the fact that we had the existing property and its performance in regards to taxes to use as the baseline to do our projections. So on this table, I provide you with the existing development and the taxes being generated from the residential, commercial, motor vehicle property taxes and commercial properties, equipment taxes. Then using the same methodology for the expenditures and costs to government, in recognizing that the 121 rental units and the then 50 units of owner-occupied have not materialized with school enrollments, we end up with a very small negative impact and ultimately, a very large positive fiscal impact in excess of $800,000 on the existing development. For the proposed modified site plan with the addition of the medical facility and the additional multifamily rentals, we did both a high and low estimate of what we thought it was. The high estimate basically uses the per-square-foot values coming off of the existing, the low estimate uses the per-square-foot values coming off the existing taxes that we know from the known development. So I believe that's a very strong, you know, fair, conservative estimate moving forward. The high end, based on what we know about the conceptualized apartments being kind of higher-end, better materials, greater amenities, and also recognizing the high-end design to the medical office space, we did a higher-end approach to what we thought the appraised value and assessed value may be on those components and provided with a higher end. At the low end, we're at 1.1 million for fiscal positive and 1.9 million at the high end. We do project school-aged children into the complete master plan, recognizing that although they have not materialized at this point, they probably will to some degree in the future, but we're not surprised by them being non-existent based on experience elsewhere. So in summary, this development grows the grand list by up to, using the high-end numbers, 2.8 million per year or 1.9 million net positive fiscal impact. Creates and sustains 210 construction jobs and 240 permanent jobs. It'll generate about 5.6 or 5.7 million in consumer spending that directly supports local businesses, that is, consumer spending in the community itself, and improves property values through the amenity effect of commercial development that specifically results from the medical services. The nearer you have services to you, the greater amenities those become, and the greater it benefits overall property values. And it diversifies the housing stock to create a resilient community that increases the number of year-round households, which ultimately support and sustain local businesses and provide housing for medical staff. As a community that depends so much on tourism as part of your activity, it's that year-round occupant and spender that becomes critical to sustain those businesses that may be more seasonal in nature. I thank you for your time. If you have any questions, I'll be available during the Q and A.
Any questions right now from the staff? Commission?
Do you, do you have a rendering of what this would look like with the, without the change in the, in the regulations with a 74-unit building rather than 124?
For the renderings, I'll turn to our architects.
Okay.
I don't personally.
I can wait. I'll be here.
All right.
Good evening. I'm David Sullivan. I'm with SLR Consulting, formerly Mylona McBroom, and I manage the transportation planning group at SLR, and we did the prior traffic study, and we did the updated traffic study for this project. The scope of this study was fairly traditional, as, as we would for a particularly follow-up study. We looked at the existing conditions, and in this case, we, we got to look a bit at the history of what we previously projected. the history of what we previously projected. So we did a comparison of our 2016 report, which compared to what actually materialized. We then made estimates of the additional traffic that would be generated. We determined what the traffic impact would be, meaning the differences in levels of service, which I'll talk about momentarily, and made a series of recommendations. So I'll go through each of those things and be happy to answer questions after that. The first thing you'll see up on the board now is the comparison of the 2016 traffic study we did compared to new counts, which we made at the facility in 2021. We made those counts last May. At that time, there was the 47,000-plus square-foot medical office building, and the residential apartments were all occupied, and the townhouses, I believe 35 of the 50 were occupied at that time. So we prorated for what the occupancies were, and you could see on the residential, the top line is the proration of what our estimates would have been or were, and on the 2021 counts shows what actually materialized in terms of trips. So my, my accuracy is off, but it's off in the, in a good direction. As you can see, the net difference is between 40, 43 in the morning peak hour and 65 in the afternoon peak hour, less trips than we would have projected, which we did project for the residential. The medical office similarly shows that it's generating traffic, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of 50% of what we had projected back in 2016. And on the bottom line, you can see overall, the development is generating traffic at a rate fairly significantly lower than projected. This is the traffic that we project for this expansion. Now, this is, this is based on the same statistics we used for the 2016 report. So again, these are conservative estimates of what the, the new apartment units and the additional medical office space would generate. And you can see in the morning peak hour, it's about 100, and about 120 in the afternoon peak hour of additional trips due to this change in the master plan. What we added is the bottom line, which again is from the slide before, and you can see in the morning, we're adding slightly more traffic than our estimates were low on the 2016, and in the afternoon, we're actually generating less traffic than the difference in our estimates last time. Nonetheless, we added the traffic to the existing conditions. We added, we created the background traffic, which is to bring all the occupancies up to 100%, and then we added these conservative estimates of new site traffic, and we did our analyses, the results of which are, in terms of level of service, and levels of service, for anyone not aware of the, the concept, is just like school grades, level of service A and B are very, very good, and level of service F is failing, and that's the type of conditions you, you get in overcapacity intersections. As you can see here, they're, they're all As and Bs, which is all very good results. We only have one particular movement where we go from A to B, and these are step functions so that A to B is not dramatic at all. In fact, an increase on average of a third of a second per vehicle causes that A to go to B. But nonetheless, As and Bs are all, all very good. So we found the good levels of service as we projected exist, and good levels of service will be maintained out there. So let me go to conclusions and recommendations. By way of summary, the level of service are all level of service B or better. The only change is that, as I pointed out, 0.3 seconds per vehicle of increased delay, which is little or no perceptible impact on the operations at these intersections. The trip generation estimates that we made in 2016 were conservative, and we didn't use those conservative numbers. We used the industry data again to generate for this expansion. One difference is that the access drives provided for residential and medical office land uses, it's not a loop road, it's a, two individual driveways, one for the residential, one for opposite Coogan Boulevard for the medical office. We think that's a positive because we're not mixing the residential and commercial traffic, and the levels of service are fine under that configuration. We also looked at the sightlines. One of our recommendations originally was that along the sightline triangle, some clearing of brush and the like was needed. That has been done. We furthered that recommendation that that should be maintained so that the sightlines that are out there today are, are kept up to the conduct standards. And lastly, the other recommendation we had was to change the operation to always stop control at the intersection of the medical office building with Coogan Boulevard and Jerry Brown Road. That has been done. We did discuss that with the police commission earlier, a couple hours ago, and we did talk about the fact that there, on Jerry Brown Road in particular, there's a little bit wider gap between the stop signs. Usually, you like the intersection to be a little tighter, and we agreed that we could relocate the northbound stop bar about 30, 30, 35 feet to the north, which will tighten up the intersection a little bit. And they were certainly happy to agree to let us do that. In general, they were, were fine with the operation there as it is, and I believe their referral has been provided tonight to the commission. So that's the end of mine. Sit and wait for questions, or I'd be happy to take them now.
Are there any questions from the Commission?
So your 2021 data, when was that generated?
It was May of this year.
And do you feel that in general, due to the pandemic, that traffic has been less than 2016 or 18 or 19?
I, I would say initially, it was very different. By May of this year, it had come back a little bit to normalcy, but yes, I think it is lower. And I think under pre-COVID conditions, those numbers probably would have been closer to what we projected. So I think that's fair. But what we do do, and we did in this case as well, we compare our counts that we take to pre-COVID conditions, which we had counts in 2016, and we coordinate with the Bureau of Policy and Planning of the Conduct. And we say, this is what we think the COVID impact is, and this is the adjustments we're making. In this particular case, the AM counts were pretty close. The PM counts, we made an adjustment, I think they were 10 or 15% to get back to those pre-pandemic travel patterns, and that was approved by the Bureau of Policy and Planning.
Thank you. And my other question is, when you met with the police commission about that stop sign, the four-way stop sign that you plan on changing, were there any accidents reported during that time?
Yes, in fact, the chief actually said, because we were somewhere in a discussion, it came up, do you, do you think a signal is warranted here? And I said, we have done analyses, we did it back in 2017, I think it was, we did a signal warrant, and signals just aren't not warranted here, there's not enough traffic, as you can tell by the very good levels of service. But the chief's comment was, well, I could tell you that this traffic control is fine because there's only been one accident since it's been installed. He says it, it does seem like if you made the stop bars a little closer, it would be an improvement. And then we did talk a little bit about the people getting used to the four-way stop, and even the possibility of, I think there's one on Coogan, the stop signs that have lights around them. So we talked a little bit about that, and they said, well, that's something we might consider down the road, but at this point, we think it's fine.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
To your point there about the lights around the stop signs, did you consider that, or was that considered for the other intersections here, Pet Squopsses, or even where the driveway comes out onto Jerry Brown Road?
No, we did not.
Okay, but was that brought up by the police?
It wasn't, and typically, why you would do that is because it's a little bit different than either somebody is accustomed to. In this case, we have a change where people, their expectation over these many years has been that you don't stop, and this would help them change their pattern to where their expectation becomes to stop. On those other intersections, they're all T, they're both T intersections, and your expectation would be to stop.
I miss, because I drive that area a lot, and I see people coming down Jerry Brown up to Pet Squopsses, and it's like they're coming up quick, and I'm just wondering if there was any way to warn them earlier for a stop sign that would slow their speed down. You know, you're coming to that intersection, a lot of people making those left turns. It's a tight intersection right there, as I'm sure you've seen.
Yeah, there was, there was no discussion of doing anything down there.
Okay. Do you, are there warnings, I think not even light it, but just, you know, stop ahead signs that could be placed perhaps?
There is a stop ahead sign.
I just wondered if they could be placed also in Pet Squopsses or, you know, Jerry Brown further, just to warn people, is it, you know, you're coming up to a busier intersection than maybe a lot of people are used to?
Yeah, I think in the northbound direction, there's a stop ahead because you are coming down the hill.
Right. But also on the Pet Squopsses, sorry, I got the pronunciation wrong there. Is there one there? I don't recall that.
So coming, coming out of Pequatzimpos?
No, there isn't.
There's not one there, no.
Would that be something that you would consider?
I, I think it's, it's fine. I, I don't have anything against it. There didn't appear to be anything in the accidents that make it seem like it's needed, but certainly there's no harm in it. So certainly, if that was something that you think is important, I'm sure David would be happy to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, just a few, Mr. Chairman. The intersection capacity analysis that's, that's set forth in the report, and you summarized very nicely, actually, in Table 4, the summary of the capacity analysis. Just to be clear, that didn't use the diminished traffic count data that was obtained in 2021. That used the trip generation information that you got from the I to E factors in the land use data, correct?
It used, well, neither. It was based on the counts that were taken, expanded for a small amount of growth, and then increased further for full occupancy of the, of the rest of the development. So another 50,000-square-foot medical office building.
Right.
And all those new, those new uses, or I shouldn't say new because they're not new, those latent uses were all based on industry data, the, the less, the conservative numbers. And then the new numbers we put on for the expansion were the conservative numbers. They weren't based on the counts.
Okay, thank you. The last question is, did you have to go to OSTA for Phase 1 of this project?
We did.
Okay, do you have to go back to OSTA again?
We do.
For Phase 2? And just, just for those that aren't involved in, in big developments like this, large development like this, trips, OSTA requirements, that's the State Office of State Highway Safety, used to be the, the State Traffic Board, and they review these, these traffic counts again meticulously. And so you're going back to OSTA for another certificate, for a modification of your certificate?
We'll be going back for, the process is administrative decision. So that's what we were approved under last time, administrative decision, and we'll be going in for a modified administrative decision. So it's, it almost acts as a new application, except they have the history of the prior administrative decision. So they'll be looking at the impact of the difference.
I guess if there were any major changes, and let's say you tripped the warrants for a signal, which it doesn't appear that you're even close to, but if, if something like that were to take place, I would think they would have to come back to us if there's a major change in, in any of the warrants that, that are met and stop sign control is, is no longer proposed. I think we should see this again.
Yeah, I, I would think that if there was, if they had dictated, and if they were to make a significant change, it would be kicked to a certificate application instead of an AD, but that would mean that they're requiring different off-site improvements. So I think if there were different off-site improvements, you would need to know. But you, you would know actually through your local traffic authority, which is the police commission. So they are part of the whole OSTA process. So they will be notified and certainly have full say if there's anything different. But quite frankly, I, I don't see that anything.
So you did analyze, and I think you may have mentioned that you don't meet the warrants for a signal.
We, we didn't do a new warrant analysis, but we did do the warrant analysis for the previous application, and it, and it did not meet it by a long shot.
And you don't think any of the changes that you're seeing here now would trip the warrants for a signal?
I, I don't think so, no. Particularly since, you know, you don't even start really considering signalization unless you have one of two things, one, a safety issue that only a signal could rectify, or if you have capacity issues. If you were to put a signal out there now, right now, levels of service are very good. If you were to put a signal out there now, a bunch of people are going to pull up to a light and sit there for 30, 40 seconds, which is level service C or D right off the bat, just by the fact that they're pulling up.
Right.
At the wrong time. So signals spread the delay a little bit, but not as efficiently as always stopped us.
I'm not shilling for a signal. I, I just would want to know now if you met the warrants for a signal.
Yeah, I, I, again, we did it last time, and, and we did not meet it, and I can't imagine anything that's happening now would change that fact.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just ask one other quick question, Ben?
Yes, and I have one last one after you.
Okay, thank you. So Jerry Brown is kind of a, it's a heavily biked, jogged road because it access into Old Mystic and then around River Road kind of thing. You know, there's various races that take place, et cetera, for the community. I personally know that when I come down the road and come down the hill towards that four-way stop sign, you're often cut off because people want to make that right into the medical facility driveway, and you're, you're coming down and they're, they're veering over to the right, and they cut you off, right? As a biker, as a jogger, you're cut off, and there's no place to go because there's no sidewalk, and there's, you know, there's just no place to go. So would there be any suggestions on how that could be improved for the more pedestrian?
For that, for that particular case, most of the road wouldn't, this wouldn't work, but when we get to that intersection.
Right, it's right when you come down that hill, right? Everybody's picking up speed, right? Yeah.
When we, and when we relocate the stop bar, perhaps what we could do is we could put a shoulder line in, and just put it in for 50 feet or so, and that gives that refuge area and the guidance for the cars to stay around that shoulder line, and then a little refuge area for bikers. So we could certainly do something like that.
It might be nice to consider that.
Sure.
I've often thought, oh my gosh, people are going to get squished, right? There's just no place to go, and the cars are kind of edging over, especially the buses that come through, you know, the small, small buses that have multiple patients or, or whatnot.
It's, it's, it's difficult with the bikes on the right side.
I know.
So you have to be overly cautious, but we could certainly do something like that.
Thank you.
Well, while we have your attention on that intersection, on your traffic guide, what would you think about a roundabout in that intersection? And eliminate the stop signs, no traffic light, and have a nice roundabout where there's room for bikers?
Well, I'm, I'm going to get a little bit out of my purview here, but.
This is a hypothetical, yeah, mine too, yeah.
But hypothetically, we did kind of toy with this a little bit last time.
Oh, really?
And, you know, just to see if something like that even worked. Roundabouts take up a lot of real estate and in this particular case, the real estate that it would be taking up is not controlled by either the town.
Right.
Or the developer. The state owns a big chunk of that and this is where I'm getting out of my area, but I remember last time there were some drainage things happening down there too.
There are.
Which would be very complicated if you're doing it. The diameter of a roundabout, if you want to be able to get commercial vehicles through there, has to be 110 feet.
I don't believe that. I've seen numerous ones with about a 50-foot diameter and there's a berm there with a heavy truck or a fire truck and just go up and over it. What was the term for it?
Mountable curb.
A mountable curb.
Well, there could, there would be a mini roundabout and the intention is just to deflect vehicles to, so you're not really, trucks aren't really going around. They're still going through and they're just hopping over the, the little mini roundabout. So it, it, it doesn't function, it doesn't function as a roundabout would or give you the benefits.
You have examined it and it didn't, and I understand it's not.
We didn't examine it hard, but you know, when we start these projects, we're always looking for the friendlyest, most friendly, active transportation friendly options that you can, you can do.
I'm, I'm still half convinced one could work there someday.
Probably not there.
And then you, was Coogan Boulevard in your accident report? You all mentioned there was a fatality there within your timeframe of study and it didn't appear in your report.
Yeah, I under, I understand that that did happen.
Yeah.
Let me just check and see if.
And actually the woman, I think was a Hartford Healthcare worker. It was in May 21st, 2021.
We just did the, we just looked at the accidents along Jerry Brown Road, including the intersections.
So it wasn't under your purview necessarily?
No, but I was aware of it and we did investigate it. Unfortunately, I mean, it was a person from Hartford Healthcare, but it had nothing to do with the, the access to Hartford Healthcare.
Right, wasn't at that intersection. Any other questions?
I'm just curious, if pre and post COVID, so there was more traffic in 2016 than 2021?
In the afternoon, peak hour, yes.
I'm just.
Yeah.
It just seems so much more crowded at the town than five years ago.
Yeah, well, you know, sometimes it's just the, the count itself too. Maybe it was particularly a high count. I think we counted in September in 2016 and these were in May, so maybe there was some residual activity with Mystic or something like that that accelerated or elevated the 2016.
Also that?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Todd Ritchie, professional engineer and also principal civil engineer with SLR Consulting. My slides don't have any words, so I'm going to try to keep things smooth and steady. And if you have any questions, feel free to ask as I go. This is the existing conditions plan. This is a survey that was done recently by Lorero Associates, Engineering Associates, and this shows the conditions out there today of the Hartford Healthcare facility. As you can see, there's the building, which is for the current building, approximately 47,000 square feet. You have the existing access from Jerry Brown Road on the northwest. You have the parking lot to the south of the building and also to the southeast and east. And you have a total of 184 parking spaces with that arrangement and 19 handicap accessible spaces.
Excuse me, Mr. Ritchie, one more time. Could you speak right into the microphone for our hearing impaired a little bit?
I feel like I can hear myself, but I don't know if you can hear me. So total spaces being 184 spaces, parking spaces, and of those, 19 handicap accessible spaces. You have wetlands to the west and southerly portions to the west, central and to the east. So there's three wetland areas. I'll go to the proposed site layout. So we have the proposed 72,000 square foot addition. The building actually goes over existing parking area that's to the east of the existing building and to a portion of it. We maintain as much parking of the existing parking as possible to the south of the building. And then we expand to, in total, out of this campus subdivision, it, it expands to take up four of the parcels. So if I go back real quick, you have the parcel of the existing building, you have those two small parcels to the, the southeast and then the parcel to the east. So that's what you're looking at here as the total development footprint. So you have an additional, let me just make sure I have my numbers right. You have an additional 164 parking spaces, including 24 accessible, additional access, handicap accessible spaces. And then to the very south, you'll see sort of a dashed parking area, which is a deferred parking area, which is additional 54 spaces that can be built out and it's going to be graded out to be built out if additional parking is, is necessary. Again, right now, the, the parking demand i- is not at capacity even for the existing facility, so that deferred parking is being requested. A total of 402 parking spaces and 43 handicap accessible spaces will be provided. As you can see also, there's crosswalks for each aisle across the main access, which is north to south, that goes under a overhang of the building and out to the Perkins Farm Drive access. The corridor in front for the handicap accessible parking area is similar to the existing layout, which has the protected accessible island or strip with tree plantings and pavers. And then it also has crosswalks for accessibility to the front, main entrance and also to the far east. I think that covers that slide. And this is the grading and utilities plan. It's just really an extension towards the east of the existing minimal grades. Again, this is across the site, minimal, minimal impacts. We'll be taking a, a slice out of the southerly berm that's there right now to provide the southerly parking area and future deferred parking location. Stormwater management was, uh, actually planned ahead for this project for the second phase. On the west side, go back to here, you can see it better. You have that large stormwater retention basin, basin that's like kidney shaped on, on the west side of the, the building. And that has capacity for the additional parking lot area to the east and south of the building. But the very south, which is beyond the existing curb line there, as you can see in those two parcels to the very south, those will be directed towards the southwest wetland and they'll go through grass swale and then enter an underground stormwater infiltration system and ultimately under extreme storms overflow into, through a pipe and discharge at a stabilized outlet into the wetland. This is same plans we've submitted to the inland wetlands agency and have been approved by the agency and reviewed, reviewed by the town engineer. This is the erosion sediment control plan. You can just kind of go through, there's perimeter linear controls, which are silt fence and straw waddles, then you have stockpile areas, which are the circles throughout the parking lot areas. We have temporary diversion berms to temporary sediment trap areas, which you can see are located to the southwest and southeast, this sort of rectangular shapes that will be temporary sediment traps prior to discharge of the runoff towards the wetlands by, by grades. Ultimately, for the finished site, you'll have curbing that will direct the flows into the stormwater management system and for treatment prior to discharge. We also have inlet protection with hay bales and also filter sacks that go in the catch basins and a variety of other controls, stabilized construction entrances with crushed stone and also check dams and diversion soils. This is the landscaping plan rendering. It's going to be basically a continuation of the existing landscaping scheme that's on the, on the property. I'll run through some of the plants. I'm not a landscape architect, but just for information, there will still be red maple up, up along the access drive, Perkins Drive. There will be river birch, which is directly central to the building on the south, closer to the building. Salt leaf zacova will be throughout the, the islands and also to the southeast. Be juniper ground cover and mountain laurel and also the feather regrasses and another bitter panic grass. So that, that's the, the planting layout that again is consistent with the existing planting list and also, you know, there'll still be some boulders incorporated into the end gaps of the island, similar to what's out there now, as you can see. These are some photos of the various plantings that will be incorporated, similar to what's out there now. So you have the laurel and also the, the river birch there. And this is the pavers that will go around the trees in the protected accessible route in front of the handicap parking spaces. Some of the grasses and ground covers. Site lighting will be of these styles, but similar to what's out there now, bollard lighting, street lamps. And I think that's it for me. If you have any questions.
Are there any questions?
Do you have any visual renderings from the perspective of the top of Jerry Brown Road looking over? So what are you going to be able to see from the street, from Jerry Brown Road, either directly looking at it or as you're coming into the building with the extension of the parking lot?
I don't have a rendering for that, but that may be more appropriate for the architect to answer once and for all.
Okay. Cause I don't, I don't see any and I think that's part of the pack.
I think it's coming up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Can you bring the existing site plan back up?
I think it was the first one.
Okay, so I think the, the, if you look at the topo in the two lots central to the map, the two distinct parcels, is that the northern tip of the visual buffer, the berm that was built as a part of the early phase of the project?
Yes.
Okay. The contours, the contours on that show really steep side slopes. And I've taken a look at the early plans for the project, the Lorero plans that were developed, and the berm is shown on that plan and it doesn't show slopes like that at all. They're, the slopes are much more gentle. So I, I think as a part of, of this portion of the project, because it was a concern of this commission when, when the bond reduction came before us, and I don't really want to get into it any more than this at this point, that, I don't, don't believe it appears that that was built in accordance with the plans. The slopes aren't the same, the shape isn't the same, and it certainly wasn't, the landscaping of it certainly wasn't done according to the plan. It was supposed to be seeded with crown vegetation. And I, I know in looking at the comments of other commissioners in advance of this evening from other commissions, that the issue of invasive species on that berm has been raised. So the, this commission has questioned the berm and the way it was built, and it does not appear to have been built in accordance with the plans. So, so it is an issue that's going to have to be dealt with and, and I think it should be shown on these plans. The as-built of the berm should be shown on these plans and the outline of the original berm should be superimposed over.
Okay.
Let me see, I had a couple of other minor questions. You indicated that the stormwater management for this phase of the project was going to be infiltration subsurface galleys?
It's going to be a combination of both. So if I may, I apologize that we didn't outline the basin on, on this layout plan, but this is more, more so for buildings and parking lot layout.
It was on the grading plan, so that was.
Yeah, there you go, that works.
Does anything to do with the revised rating and the extension of the parking lot? I realize that we're going to connect the driveways with, with the residential and eliminate the emergency access roadway, the, the extra emergency access roadway as a part of this project. But assuming that doesn't happen for a while and the emergency access has to function for a while, is there anything in the grading plan that will obstruct the emergency access from continuing to function until that connection can be made?
No.
Okay.
And as far as your previous question regarding stormwater, I'll just kind of, so above those two parcels, the delineation to, to call it that, that to the south, all of the new parking areas to the east and northeast will flow into the, be captured and collected and flow and discharge into the existing stormwater management area, the basin to the west. Before going into the basin, the, there's hydrodynamic separators that were oversized for that area. So we've analyzed all of that and that's been reviewed and accepted by the town engineer and also for, for treatment, but also the capacity of that basin for water storage has, all it really requires is a modification of the outlet, the orifice plate to change it to a six-inch orifice outlet.
And that doesn't.
And that doesn't change.
Place any undue strain on a downstream.
No, we've, we've done the full hydraulic, hydrologic and hydraulic analysis and provided a report to the town engineer and to the inland wetlands and also your commission.
I also saw that there was a question on the, the as-built height of the berm.
Yes, we've resolved all of those questions. We responded to all those questions. We did, we did, we did get an, this existing conditions survey here is current conditions as-built.
Okay, we don't necessarily see all that detail. So just for the record, you are able to maintain one foot of free board below the as-built height of the top of the berm?
Correct.
In a hundred yards from it?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you.
And, and just in, and just to finalize with the stormwater management, so that portion will go to the west, the area south to those two parcels right there will go through the, will sheet flow into the, the vegetated swale, enter the underground system for infiltration and then at an overflow event, will discharge into the wetlands controlled. Thank you.
I had one follow-up question. You said in this 50 parking lot future capacity, if needed, would nibble into the berm, the big, large berm?
Yes.
How much would it, and how would you deal with that?
So the, so the berm, the visual barrier, right now, even to create the parking that we're proposing.
Yes.
Not the deferred parking, will nibble into that berm.
I see that.
But it's not, but it's not, but yeah.
How much is nibbling?
It'll take a bite out of it. But the berm, the, but the visual buffer of the berm isn't in that, isn't in the direction we're removing it from, if you're looking due south.
I understand. I happened to take my dog up there for a walk last weekend and it is a steep berm. And so when you're slicing into it to create the parking, are you pushing that angle back to the south?
We, we, we are, we're, we're excavating back, but we are providing a grade that's a consistent three, I think it's three to one, four to one grade, which is standard mullable, walkable.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
For the record, with Perkins and Will Architects, and I want to talk to you about the architectural character of the proposed building. Has anybody actually not seen the, the building that's been constructed already? Has everybody been there? Just, I don't want to go over things that you know already. I think clearly intent here was always to design a building that felt like it belonged to this community and, and reflected the heritage.
to this community and reflected the heritage, the nautical heritage of, of the region, and at the same time create a distinctive healthcare, advanced healthcare facility with a sense of place. This is the site plan, as you just saw, with the civil engineer and, and the location of this expansion of the existing building, basically along the north edge of the site against the highway, and adjacent to the Phase One building, essentially as an extension of, of that and to create what we think is sort of a campus feel. This is a section, so maybe this helps to explain your concern before about the relationship of Jerry Brown Road to the, to the building. So you can see here, and these are diagrammatically represented, but the dotted line there is meant to somehow represent the berm, and it's not scientifically accurate, but suggests where it is in relation to the berm and how it screens the view of the building from the street.
Excuse me, we seem to have a medical situation in the room, so if we could just hold your testimony at that moment, please? If we could all settle down, please? Maybe have quiet in the room, please? Okay, thank you for your patience. We did have a situation, I think she's under control.
Would you mind just starting on the dotted line again? Because I, I kind of missed that base on the.
Sure, yeah. Do you want me to start from the beginning again?
No, 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 just.
What the profile represents?
Right there, yes.
Yeah, so this is a, a section cut through the site from Jerry Brown Road up towards the existing building, which is, has the slightly taller portion there on the left, and then the extension to the right. And I, I won't say this is scientific, but it's meant to sort of diagrammatically represent the berm and the extent of it, that is about the length of it, and then that slightly blue dotted line is where the catchment basin is for stormwater. So we're just trying to indicate the distance of the building from Jerry Brown Road and also the fact that the berm does help to screen it from view.
So the upper, sorry, this keeps on falling, the upper dotted line is, is the berm?
Yes.
And it's in place?
Yeah. But it, and, and to be clear, it doesn't extend all the way along Jerry Brown Road. If you've been there, you can see that it's, it's in one place, and so, you know.
Yeah.
We're trying, that's why we dotted it, we don't want to suggest that it's always blocked, it's just something that you encounter there, so.
Thank you.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So I'll, I'll keep going. There are trees along the road as well that do help screen the building from view. So one thing I think it's important to understand is the plans you saw before showed just the ground floor, and this is the ground floor plan. You can see there are three different entries, one main entry closer to the existing building, a second one farther along, and then we actually have under the overhang on the far right a discharge lobby, which is meant to sort of provide a more discreet and protected area for people after they've had some sort of procedure where they might want a little more care and discretion. But as you, as you go up in the building to the second floor, you can see that the curve that exists in the existing building is now carried all the way across this second phase, so that it starts to merge the form of the, of the, of the original and this building, and the intent is really to make really one composition that will be seamless and to also at the same time create a courtyard that screens the, the service areas between the two buildings and frame the, the plaza that occurs in front of the building. And then if you go up to the, the uppermost floor, you can see that curve is even more prominent, and you can see, also see the curve on the south side is extended as well. And when I show you the renderings, I think they'll become more clear. These are the elevations, and again, three stories matching the height of the building that's there now, with the same window, the same materiality, and with signage, but signage facing to the highway, there's really very minimal signage facing the parking area. And here you can see that form I was trying to explain with that curve on the upper two levels, but the more squared off footprint at the, at the lowest level, which allows for more flexibility in providing the kind of procedures that we mentioned earlier. And you can see here also the, the waiting areas retain that idea of an open glassy expression that lets you sort of get a lot of great light from the south, but also views out to the landscape. So these are a couple of renderings that try to express the idea of what that building looks like. The original building on the right and the expansion to the left and that curve carrying across, same materials, the same glass, really meant to be a literal extension of the existing building and feel like a unified expression in that location. Again, picking up on the idea of sort of the nautical heritage and the slightly curving form of the building becomes even stronger in this second phase. And then here you see it from the south with, again, the waiting areas and the idea that, that's very transparent and that the little plaza that we created on the south side with the seating, if you've been there, you've seen that seating, and the idea that that really becomes almost a quasi-civic space that could have health fairs, things like that, and the, this second building actually helps reinforce that as well. You can also see there's a one-story bridge that connects the two buildings, so that, as we mentioned before, there's really a sense that you have a one-stop shop, and you can go amongst all these facilities indoors in a convenient way. So I think that's really all I had to show. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions from the commission? I have a couple. A lot of your presentations, especially something like that, you always put Phase One in the foreground. It didn't take me long to figure out, oh, okay, Phase One's in the foreground on every single sheet we have, I believe. And to my mind, that, not a little sleight of hand, but it does show, you know, it's diminishing in its trajectory, but in reality, you don't have any drawings of it the other way around.
Yeah.
And what, that's okay. But what I found, on your north side, you have two stories with that rain garden that breaks up the large facade, facade of the building.
Yep.
And that's on the ninety, Route 95 side where no one can really see it. I was wondering, is there any way to sort of flip-flop that and put the rain garden on the south side, the roof garden, excuse me, on the south side? And you'd have that less of a three-story facing the south in the parking lot, making it less visually wall-like? Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. I think, you know, the main idea was really to carry the curve across, and, and for, for a long time, we actually just had that curve for three stories on the north side, and then Hartford Healthcare asked if they could expand that footprint out along that side. So I don't think there's really much interest or, or programmatic reason to extend it on the south. It wouldn't necessarily serve a purpose that would help. It, you know, by squaring that off, it allows for a certain more flexibility in terms of procedure space. So I understand where you're coming from. I, I still feel like the way that these facades unify together is an important factor, and that if we did bump it out on this side, that might start to weaken that expression. So I, that's, that, that's my response.
Fair enough. Is your roof going to be built to withstand, to have solar panels on the top? I understand you're going to have some solar on this building?
I think the solar is going to be on the residential portion. I continue to try to convince Hartford Healthcare to put solar panels on everything, and sometimes I'm successful and sometimes I'm not, but. Oh, okay, great. See, this is why Dave's.
And then lastly, what kind of illumination will be on that Route 95 side? What kind of signage are you going to have? I assume it'll be illuminated at night?
It'd be similar to what's there now, so it's, it's, it's an illuminated logo and Hartford Healthcare sign, same way, which is sort of the standard that they've asked for.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So, a couple of things. Are you going to show us pictures from the street view with, with the change in the parking lot and the lighting? Are you going to do that, as I asked the previous gentleman? So where, when are we going to see those renderings?
This is really all we have to show you today is these images, these renderings, and this does show some of the parking, but it doesn't show.
Yeah.
I'm not sure it's what you're looking.
So I think it's very, I think it's very important, you know, one of the key elements to this whole project in the initial discussions was, was kind of what are you seeing from the street? All right, what are you seeing from Jerry Brown Road? Not, not necessarily the highway, but from Jerry Brown Road, when you're directly across at Stone Ridge, when you're coming from the south side, right? What, what are you seeing? And from what I'm, you know, right now, you don't see too much, but you're extending the parking lot, there'll be more light, so I'd like to see it in the day as well as the night, a rendering of some sort, so that we can, we can ascertain what is it going to look like from the street? I think, I think that's important, and actually, it's supposed to be part of your package, so, you know, I think we need that. Also, I'd like to understand, since this building is not opened at night, is that correct? I mean, is, we're not asking for this to be any kind of an emergency use building, et cetera? This is basically a daytime facility. What are the purposes of the, of the lighted signs on 95? I mean, you've got your tower sign, which, if everybody remembers, we gave you a height variance for that, then you've got your big neon sign that goes the length of the building, and now you're asking for another neon, neon sign. So, you know, what, can we eliminate one of these signs?
So the signage is all, it's facing, the, the ones that you're seeing, though there's only a very small sign on this side on the Phase Two, and the other signage is all facing the highway away from the community, so you're really not seeing that, as you said, from the street. So I'm not sure, you know, part of this is that Hartford, as a client, would like to see signage on each building, that's their standard, that's how they like to work, and, and that's part of the composition of how we designed the building. I can ask them if they would be willing to forego the signage on the second phase, if that's what you're after.
Okay.
But that's.
Right, because Hartford, Hartford, they have signage on other buildings in Stonington, and it's not, it's not this type of signage. So you, you know, you go out to the next exit, you see they've got buildings there that don't have this mega sign, so something to consider.
I will say, the signage that you, we put on this building is their standard signage, and we haven't changed that in terms of their.
But there's no reason you can't. You just haven't yet.
I haven't asked them to forego it, no, that's correct.
Thank you.
Lynn brings up an interesting point, and it's probably not your bailiwick, but we ought to understand the hours of operation of this facility. Seven days a week, you know, 10 hours a day, whatever it is. And I don't know who to, who to bring that question to, but, but before we're finished, we'll probably want an answer to that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a 24/7 building, that's for sure. It's an ambulatory care building, so it's like going to see your doctor, and, you know, at the end of the business day, they go home. I'm not quite sure what the hours are now, you know, whether they.
Nor am I.
Yeah, so I can find out for you, but.
Thank you.
I also remember in the beginning, and I think Mr. Ladizori addressed this initially during the first phase where the lights were on in the building at night, and I think he put shades up or something to kind of cut down to make sure that, that, you know, it wasn't glaring. The second phase, is there a way you can change the, the windows to a different glass? They did that to the, the building that's being built along the river as part of the seaport. They changed the glass so that at night you didn't see all the light, excuse me, see the light, et cetera.
Okay, I'm not sure I'm familiar with what was done there.
Like a filter.
Yeah.
There was like a filter, a filter on the window to, to mute opaque filter, and it, it reduced transmission, transmission of glare through the glass during the evening.
And why were the lights on if the building wasn't open?
It was a hotel.
It's a hotel.
Yeah, well, this is, this is different. You're not, lights aren't on when people aren't there.
They are on.
They're on 24 hours a day, 24/7?
I think it's.
Maybe associated with building maintenance or, or, you know, cleaning.
Cleaning.
On servicing the building during the evening hours, the lights are on frequently.
Okay, so if.
So this is a large structure, and if you can incorporate that material, it doesn't really change the design, it's just using a different material, glass type windows.
I can look into that. I think probably the, the better solution is simply to have the blinds come down in the evening and, you know, block the light from coming out through the windows. They're already there, and they could just be operated so that the blinds are down in the evening.
But the other would be permanent.
Sorry?
It, it would be more permanent if you changed the material.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to ever have a glass that lets daylight in and then doesn't let interior light out. That's what glass does. So I think you're, if you're really looking to prevent light from coming out of the building when the lights are on in the evening, then the blinds are a better solution.
Something to look into.
I mean, it's.
I'm suggesting that, you know, we've had other applicants come where we've had concerns, and they've addressed them through, through the material they're using for the windows, and so it's something to consider.
Okay, well, I'll look into it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Oh, Chuck.
Actually, just, just a couple more questions. I, I just wanted to restate what Lynn said and underscore what she said, because I do agree with it. I was not a commissioner when the first phase was approved, but, but I followed the application, and I know that it was a critical element of the design, that the, the perspective of this from Jerry Brown was an issue of concern to everyone. So that perspective drawing is of interest to me as well. The perspective being from someone standing at grade, you know, standard height divide, my height divide is quite the size of yours, but a standard height divide, and, and viewing the, the both buildings, the one that's there and the new one, and I guess the apartment, if it could be imposed on there too, would be ultimately of value, not necessary in this case, but ultimately of value. And the, the profile of the ramp as it's built, or the, not the ramp, the berm as it's built, and the berm as it was proposed, because the two aren't the same. I don't think it's in the place that it was proposed, and I don't think the height is the same. So, so that perspective drawing is really valuable to all of us, and what Ben and Lynn said, I wholeheartedly agree on, that that is an element that we really want to see before we act on this application.
Okay. I'd just like to clarify two items here. If you look over at the proposed final master plan, the major viewpoint which has created issues has always been from the emergency access point, more on the southerly portion of the lot. And the reason is, we had to put that in there for emergency access vehicles. By linking all the phases of the development together, we can now eliminate that emergency access corridor, and we plan to replant that with a native fescue mix. And we plan to replant that with a native fescue mix, and we can also add an additional plantings for screening. I think when you look at the perspective that was put together, that is actually from that location. Now, we've added around 25 pine trees there. However, they're only a year old, you know, they're eight to nine feet, but they're supposed to grow three to four feet every single year. So the idea is that they will grow over time. And as we fill in that viewpoint, it's going to obstruct a lot of the view. That being said, I'm not David Copperfield, and I can't hide 120,000 square foot building. But if we look back at the master plan, the final proposed plan, the only resident that is impacted is actually across the way at Southern Wing. I think it's Building Three at Stone Ridge. And there was a resident there who did have an issue with the lighting. Now, she moved in after the building was constructed. However, we did automate all the blinds to go down after business hours. We looked at eliminating all the lighting, but they had to be on for life safety. But what we did is we diminished the lighting, so every other light goes off. And they do go off a little later at night. And we also put, we were looking at putting in a timer for the lights, the signage facing Jerry Brown Road. She mentioned that from her unit, which was on the third floor, so it had the cleanest viewpoint, she could just about see, and I think if you drive by there, the eastern corner of the first phase. And the second phase is really hidden behind that berm. And even the apartments is the most secluded section of the site. When we developed the first phase of the apartments, we actually had to spend a lot of money on marketing, because no one knew we were back there. And this section of the site is immediately adjacent. So, you know, I think if you go by there now, you can see a little bit of the top of the building, but you don't get a full impact. So those are some of the things we've done to try to diminish that adverse impact. But that being said, it is a large building. We went to tremendous lengths to move it across the highway, I mean, across closer to the highway. So that is unfortunately an issue that we're dealing with as we move forward.
As I said, I remember that you did address the concerns with the shades.
Yeah.
But again, you can address them in a more...
And we'll continue to do that for the second phase, of course.
Yep.
I'll bring up Tim, my architect, for the apartments.
My name is Tim Wentz, and I was the architect on the original residential building. And because of its success, David asked me back to create its sister building, which we have done. It's basically the same shape, configuration, the amenity packages will be the same.
Excuse me, Mr. Wentz, one more time. I don't mind if you take your mask off, if it helps with the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The, as I was saying, this is a sister building for the first phase. And because of the success of the first phase, we wanted to create something which was pretty much identical with just some modifications within the units themselves. This building is set back further from I-95. And I go up northbound on I-95 a lot, and I can barely see my building in the first phase, and I'm always looking for it. As David said, you only see the top of it and the cupola. So I feel pretty confident that you're not going to see this building at all from I-95. And although the roads are separate, the entrances are separate, we do have two areas where the parking lots are joined for emergency access. So there's actually two entrances for emergency vehicles off of Jerry Brown Road, and the one parking lot on the medical side could be accessed to the residential parking lots. Because the building is set back, we're able to create a lot of green space in front of the building itself before we get into a parking field. And we are able to create a public park, which will be for residents, patients, medical staff to interact. And then all the components of the campus are, of course, interconnected with natural trails. This is a blow-up of the site, and from this, you can see that our U-shaped building has that same courtyard amenity package. There's a pool there, there is a gazebo for grilling, there's a gazebo for what we call the living room, which has a fireplace in it. And then there's also a separate fire pit. It's heavily landscaped, and we typically find that when we create these kinds of spaces, the units which look down on these spaces are more popular than the units that look out onto the parking lots. It's just a, it's fact. It's a very pretty view, even at nighttime when the pool was lit up. And within the building itself, the amenity package is pretty much the same as the first phase. It will have its own wellness center. It will have a clubhouse with a cafe in it. And it will have, of course, locker rooms. It will have a small business center for people that want to use it. And then, of course, there'll be some moderate leasing facilities there, too. This is going to be the front elevation, and if it looks familiar, it's pretty much identical to what we're doing in Phase One, with the exception that we have limited the roof line and taken the cupola off it.
Excuse me, by front...
And do something very similar to the grays and whites that we did in the first phase. And of course, what's very important for any resident in these apartments, the first thing that strikes them is, there's a lot of windows. You know, we use large windows, they're three by five. Most rooms have a double window. And what that does is, it creates a feeling of lightness and airiness in the apartments themselves. So you can take a relatively small apartment, and it makes it look a lot, lot bigger. The, also, each one of the units has its own individual outdoor balcony. This is a rendering perspective of the building. And you can see that the forms are pretty much similar to the first phase. We have, you know, pulled the decks out, so that what we can do is set up a rhythm with the ins and outs of the building, so that we don't have any singular flat plane that is too long. And of course, we've got the gable ends which are breaking up the roof line. Now, this is demonstrating that, one of the things that I wanted to point out was that what's different in this building is that the fourth floor units are going to have lofts in them. And so each one, or almost every single fourth floor unit, will have its own individual loft. However, what we're doing is, we're building the loft within the roof line itself, so that it is not increasing the height of the building. And historically, we have found that the lofts are extremely popular with residents. You know, in this day and age, when you get a lot of cohabitating of units, the lofts become an important, important space. Of course, this is a picture of the first phase, and the second phase is going to look very similar to it. I'm sure you've all seen it in person, and it's going to be completely complimentary, both in style and materials, fenestration, colors, everything. And this just shows the general layout of a typical floor. The buildings have two elevators in them. There's a mix of one-bedroom units, one-bedroom dens, two-bedroom, two-bedroom dens, three bedrooms. And then, all of those unit types will also have lofts on the fourth floor. So there's a tremendous mix of units that make the building very popular and very easy to lease. The kitchens are, you know, what we would call standard fare today for a market rate apartment. It is, you know, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances. We typically use wood vinyl flooring. And what's important is that each one of these units is individually metered for electric and water. So the tenant controls his own utilities in terms of the cost. And this is an example of the kitchen. And you can see that we use contemporary cabinets that are 42 inches high on the top. We love to put in islands, because they're very popular. Stainless steel appliances, granite countertops, as I said before. It's a nice kitchen. And it's roomy, and it's good for cooks, the way they're laid out. Now, this is a typical side elevation, and you can see that the New England architectural theme is carried around all the sides of the building, and also the interior courtyard sides. Again, we're doing complimentary colors. And by alternating the colors and alternating the materials, we can create a building which is a lot less massive in appearance than it would be if it were monolithic in color, monolithic in materials, or even without the in-and-out planes that we always put in. This is a shot from the interior courtyard at the pool area. Again, we found even in campus-style apartment complexes that the units which look down on the pool always rent first. They're very popular. But it is a tremendous amenity. And you can see in the background there, on the right-hand side, is the grilling gazebo. On the left-hand side is the living room, which has the fireplace in it. And then, behind the pool, which you can't see, is the fire pit. And these are all important amenities. You include that also, that you've got a dog wash area, you've got a dog park on the campus, you've got the public park there. So we have very strong active and passive amenities in this project. And this is just a night shot. You can see that it creates a very attractive space. And that's it. Do you have any questions? I know you asked about these south elevations. I will supply them for you. It's just, we edited this package for time constraints.
Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Yes.
Two questions for you. One is, what's to prevent the emergency access roads, the connections between the parking lots, becoming a throughway for residents?
Well, it'll probably have a breakaway chain on it.
Okay. That'll ruin the front of your car. Yeah. Okay. The other question is, if you were limited to the 74 unit rather than 124, what changes would you make to the building?
Well, the building will become shorter, I think.
Take a floor off, floor out?
I wouldn't take a floor off, because then the footprint remains the same. You know, the advantage, if it were 74, is you'd have more green area that would surround the building. But I don't think that it makes sense to take a floor off it.
So you just shortened it?
Shorter horizons.
Shortened it up a bit.
Well, we could shorten it, yes. But, you know, the length of the buildings is a function of the units which are facing the outside, obviously. For instance, a single-bedroom unit is always going to be 24 to 25 feet wide. And a two-bedroom unit is always going to be 36 feet wide. So when you start to take in factors like the mix of how many one-bedrooms you want, and how many two-bedrooms you want, then that really defines what the length of the buildings are going to be. You know, I can't get the same number of units in a shorter building.
No, of course not. So it'd be roughly two-thirds the size that you proposed, I guess.
Probably, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Is that it, David?
I'd say yes.
Okay. We'd like to open it up for public discussion, all those who have signed up in favor. Is there a sheet available I could look at, so we can call them out, or?
Here you go.
Okay. Roughly 25 speakers. Would everybody be amenable to about three minutes per person? I don't hear any boos. Okay.
Or less. Three or less. You don't have to go the whole three if you don't want to.
So, starting in order how they signed in, with in favor. Is it Dennis Doherty here?
Hello, my name is Dennis Doherty. I've been a resident of Mystic for over 30 years. My wife and I are homeowners in the Perkins Reserve condo complex. And as a matter of fact, I am the homeowners' Association president. Mr. Latizori came to us back in August and explained a large part of what he has explained here tonight. And everybody I know of in the Perkins Reserve condo units are in favor. There's a number of them here, could you please stand up? Just to show how many people are from Perkins Reserve, just from the condos themselves, and we support what David Latizori wants to do. And we don't see a downside to this, I'm sorry if you can't hear me. I don't, we don't see a downside to this expansion. It is a concentration of people in an area that results in very little adverse impact to the surrounding area. We are an aging community with Stone Ridge across the street. It's comforting to us to have the medical building right there. It's nice to be able to walk to our doctor's appointments. We also see this as a very nice boon to the town in the form of taxes. And also, we have, you know, almost 500 units, and they're all going to be supporting locally-owned restaurants. We have two supermarkets nearby, within three miles, and a dozen or so privately-owned restaurants. And make it five miles, and you've got an explosion of shopping, shopping restaurants. And this will be a, it'll help the local economy. And, yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there Mary Cummings sat in?
Hi there. Thank you for having me, and I admire everything you're doing here. I can't believe these late hours you keep. I'm an internist, and I've practiced in the community since 1994. And I'm the medical director for the primary care team in the Perkins Farm building. And I'm also involved in recruiting doctors and nurse practitioners and physicians assistants to our community. And we need more space. The building has provided an incredible need. And when I look at towns like this, I think, you know, what do you care about? When I was, a few years ago, when I was raising kids, it was all about education. And then, as you age, you start to realize the value of high-quality health care. And that building has brought that right at the fingertips of the people that need it. And so I hear everything you've said tonight. I live in the community, a lot of my patients came in and said, boy, that's a big building. What's that funny gray thing on the side of that building? Oh, that building's lit up all night. Oh, that building's lit up all night. And so I heard that a lot while the building was being constructed. And then a pandemic came, and people swarmed to the building to get COVID testing and to get COVID vaccines, and to get x-rays done, and imaging, and primary care, and neurologic care, and physical therapy. And all of a sudden, that all stopped. And all of my patients came in and said, what a resource that is. And so I just think that we have to look at providing that kind of valuable, valuable project to a community like this. And we'll see where it takes us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rob Simmons.
Three minutes. Good evening. I will begin with a short, two-minute presentation and then proceed after that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Rob Simmons, 268 North Main Street. I rise in support of this project. And let me say, for one reason, is because David Ladizori and the terrific job that he's done, he's no stranger to our town. He grew up here, he went to school here. He's already developed what I think will be the most expensive and productive real estate development project in the history of the town. He's created over 100 permanent jobs with more to come, and he's on his way to becoming the town's number-one taxpayer, probably something that he didn't dream of when he was a kid. But you know what? When I was first elected, we love, we love when there's a big number-one taxpayer. It's good for the town. But you know, this almost didn't happen. It almost didn't happen. I called him in May of 2015 about the Perkins Farm situation, and he said, well, I'm about to proceed with the development of 36 dwellings, using up 90% of the space, leaving only 9% or 10% of open space, and a net loss of $250,000 to the town. It's only because of his love of the town that he decided to go ahead and pursue the vision of Dr. Petraselli, of Jason Vincent, our Director of Development, numerous Stone Ridge residents and others who wanted to see this project begin. It took tremendous risk, it took sacrifice, it took foresight to see the project through. It wasn't easy. And now we're reaping the benefits. I think what we're looking at tonight is nothing more than a completion of the vision of 2015. We're extending medical facilities as originally planned and placing more residential units in the vacant space between Hartford Healthcare and Harbor Heights to respond to additional demand for housing. By the way, there's a dog park. Right? Is that so cool? At the same time, we preserve the important open-space buffer between these projects and the Stone Ridge retirement community. Completion of the interior road system on the Perkins Farm campus will allow the closing of the emergency access, in my opinion, that currently exists or exits onto Jerry Brown Road, and will allow David to complete his restoration of the beautiful stone wall along Jerry Brown Road, which might also allow bikers to go inside the project and down the hill to avoid that dangerous intersection. So this project is like a three-legged stool. Each piece is necessary. We have open-space preservation, medical care facilities, market-rate housing, led to one of the town's most successful projects. I see it as a win-win. I fully support this project, and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. A totally applause, please. Bruce Flax, in favor.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Flax. I'm a 26-year Mystic resident and current president of the Greater Mystic Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here today to express support for David Ladizori's expansion plans for the Perkins Farm campus, which includes 72,000 square feet in addition to the Hartford Healthcare existing ambulatory care center and a second phase of the Harbor Heights apartment homes. This final phase will be constructed on remaining vacant lots located on the most secluded section of the site and will link the residential and professional development area of the campus while bringing even more quality medical care and housing to this region. It is expected to generate $2 million per year in property taxes and over 240 permanent jobs. It is also expected to generate 5.6 million per year in consumer spending. David's been a respectful community developer and steward, and he's taken the time to involve local business into his campus. And it's meaningful for the businesses that have taken part, and it shows that he cares not only for the residents that he has, but for the businesses that surround him. I'm in line with the minutes and opinion from the Stonington EDC meeting from September 14th, when the Economic Development Commission met with David and reviewed his plans. The proposed plans tick all the boxes that EDC looks for in large-scale projects summarized here. The creation of 100 permanent new jobs on the campus, a material increase in the grand list, additional business personal property taxes based on the assets of the new medical businesses, 300 to 500 construction jobs. Additional apartments will help prevent the decline in Stonington's population, and the residents will support local business. In addition to the above economic drivers, this expansion helps to cement Stonington as an elder care center of excellence. With Stone Ridge and Masonic Care both being in our top 10 taxpayers, we want to encourage more elder care business to relocate to Stonington. The EDC also favors high density on properties that have already been developed in keeping with the Stonington Plan of Conservation and Development. This is a perfect opportunity to increase the grand list without impacting our open green spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mr. Chairman, Committee. My name is Chris Moran. Nice to be with you tonight. I'm a physician, a resident of Stonington for several decades. My family's here. I'm a retired physician and currently president of Mystic Geriatrics Institute. I mention that because Dr. Petraselli was the founding, one of the founding members of the institute. And his vision for the Perkins Farm was to create a center of geriatric excellence. And Mystic Geriatrics Institute, one of our prime visions is to create a space where individuals can age in place. And my view of this project is that it does both of those things. It allows for excellent geriatric care, and it allows for individuals to age in place. And Mystic Geriatrics Institute is firmly behind and supports Mr. Ladizori's project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Donna Hanley. I am the president of the East Region for Hartford Healthcare, and I am here speaking in support of the proposed expansion. As you heard earlier, this current building is not only full and busy, we are at capacity. Primary care is trying to take space away from the specialists. It's not always pretty. But the important thing that happens in this building, we have co-located multiple specialists that can care for our neuroscience patients and our heart and vascular patients. What that means for the patients of this community is they have access to the multiple specialists that they need to coordinate their care in one building along with their primary care physicians. There is a beautiful expanded rehab space that is busy all the time, as well as the imaging services that you heard, three Tesla magnet MRI, which is really state-of-the-art. I recently was rounding in the building. There was a gentleman working on one of the machines in rehab, and of course, he saw all the suits walking through, and he asked to speak to me. He said, I just want you to know how much this building means to me. Four of my physicians are in this building. I can come to one place to see all my physicians. And really, he was the head of the rehab center. Working with David Ladizori has been not only a joy, but a privilege. His commitment to Perkins Farm, his commitment to this community, just as we in Hartford Healthcare have a commitment to the health of the community, it's really been an honor, David. So I fully, we fully endorse the proposed expansion of this site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dave Tinklebaugh? Is that the right pronunciation?
I'll go there close. Thank you. I'm Dave Tinklebaugh. I am a neurologist at the Perkins Farm location. And I thought maybe tonight I would just speak real briefly from the perspective of patients and physicians at work there, being one of the 100 full-time physicians. So, you know, we have a number of different neurologic specialties there. One is movement disorder, in which we see primarily Parkinson's disease. And these folks with their disease have a progressive slowness of movement, as you probably know. And so, you know, sort of in the old model, before we could get everything under one roof, they would be across town for their imaging and to a specialist. These are folks that, you know, take minutes just to get out of a car, never mind get across a parking lot. And so you add up that time, and these, you know, these doctor visits were a whole day affair. So I think the ability to get folks into this setting and have them see their specialists, they can see primary care, they can see us down in neurology, get their PT, blood drawn, all-in-one fell swoop, I think is really, really refreshing to the patients and a real reliever of stress. And then the other thing I'd like to speak to just quickly is what it's like to be a physician there. So, you know, you hear a lot of these tech companies create these big spaces where they can have creative magic happen because of the collaboration, and there is magic that happens there from a provider perspective, as well as we often will, I'll go down the hall and speak with a physician. We'll sit down, look at an MRI, and we'll come up with a consensus diagnosis and treatment plan before the patient even walks out of the building. That was not possible with, you know, the way that we had seen patients in the past. So I am in full support, grateful for any and all of you who got that first building erected. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor.
Good evening. I'm Keith Sorensen, Senior Vice President for Facilities and Capital Projects at Mystic Aquarium. I'm here on behalf of Mystic Aquarium to state our support for the final phase of Mr. Ladizori's development plans for the Perkins Farm. As a neighboring business, Mr. Ladizori continues to keep Mystic Aquarium apprised on the status of this project, and we're happy that the Phase 1 plan was completed and has been successful. From the outset, we felt that this project was a good fit for the Perkins Farm, the area, and the community, and we continue to feel that way. We encourage the commission to approve the application that's before them tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie Schott. I live at Stone Ridge. I'm the chair of the Residents Council there, and I'm a patient across the street. Very nice commute, I must add. I've had a number of procedures there, MRI, et cetera. It is a world-class facility, no question about it. One thing that's very appealing to us for the second building is we expand that multi-specialty offering. For example, I think homeology is going over there, which a lot of us could use. So this only enhances the value of this community-based medical facility. And we have the pleasure of watching it all go up, and what a great job David has done. So very strong support as from Stone Ridge as we have since the inception. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to butcher this first name. Is it Teresa Yandam? Forgive me. I can't read your handwriting.
No worries. There it goes now. Teresa. Okay. Thank you. Great. So I'm not a great public speaker, but I'm going to try here. So I'll start off by saying that I currently live at Harbor Heights, and my family has been part of the Mystic Stonington area for decades. I moved back to the area four years ago, full-time, and plan to be here for many years to come. Back in April, my long-term boyfriend, who has been here for over 10 years, and I found ourselves in a very tough situation. Our lease was coming to an end, our condo was sold, and we were having a very difficult time finding a place to live. While our ultimate hope was to buy a home, we weren't having any luck. On top of that, there were very slim pickings on rentals. We always had my parents' house to live in, but as mid-30-year-olds, that was just not going to work. With about three weeks left on our lease, we were very lucky that Harbor Heights had one unit left. That all said, we've been at Harbor Heights for about eight months now. I've never seen such a happy and welcoming community. Prior to Mystic, I've lived in big apartment communities in Providence, DC, New York City, and Long Island. Nowhere comes close to Harbor Heights. The staff is amazing, and they do their best to help the local community. We actually received a welcome packet featuring local businesses and received a weekly flyer under our door that highlights local events and local businesses. Harbor Heights did a really great job at creating a community. Whenever people walk by each other, everyone always smiles and says hello. I've met people that work at EB, in the Navy, at Pfizer, at hospitals, and at Sonalist Studios. My point is that there are a lot of kind, intelligent, and ambitious professionals at Harbor Heights. That said, to keep this somewhat short, and in closing, as someone that wants to ultimately buy a home here and raise a family, the people that I've met at Harbor Heights are the people that I want in my community. In my opinion, these are the people that we should all want in our community and to attract to our community now and for decades to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Ferguson. I live at 118 Edco Street on the Groton side of Mystic, but I'm here tonight as president of the Downtown Mystic Merchants. As many of you know, Mystic Downtown has become a culinary destination. What David has done has made this area of Mystic a medical services destination, an area of superb medical services, to really emphasize that. But not only does Perkins Farm support superb medical services, it's also an area of residential housing that respects and supports the environment and brings dollars to the shops that make up downtown Mystic. Like I said, as president of Downtown Mystics, I support the Perkins Farm final phase because it supports the goals of Downtown Mystic Merchants, and that is to promote economic development, encourage people to come to Mystic, support community needs, and keep Mystic quaint and beautiful. And as has been noted, I mean, David puts the flyer underneath the residents' doors each week and promotes Downtown Mystic Merchants, so I'm very appreciative of that. So this final phase supports all of these goals and all of what we try and do for Downtown Mystic. And so therefore, I, Bill Ferguson, support the Perkins Farm final phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Hi, Chris Freeman. I live at Perkins Farm. Like David, I was born and raised in town. Like David, I came back to town. Been here back now for 23 years, and what I heard this evening, I think, was largely positive. What's not to like? It's providing employment, this Phase 2 is providing additional employment beyond hospitality and retail, is providing quality health care to all of our residents, is providing a bridge for young remote workers to move back to Stonington or come to Stonington for the first time. It's providing green space, which is very complimentary to the 10-plus miles of walking trails abutting the property across the road in Avalonia and Pequas Seaposts. There's, I, trust me, I've been commuting now to Mystic Seaport for the last seven months from Perkins Farm. There's no discernible traffic issues. I've been driving those roads since I was, well, able to drive. And it's the same now as it was 40 years ago when I got my license. It seems to me to be highly complimentary with some of the conversations that the EDC is conducting right now in the community around future planning for the whole Golden Triangle region. And I run and ride on those roads like so many other people, and I can assure you, it's not my neighbors who are running me into the shoulder every day, it's the people who don't live there and aren't aware that there are runners and riders on those roads. So I see... on those roads. So I see no reason to stand in opposition to this project. I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening. My name is Arthur Blaze. I'm here as a resident of Harbor Heights. I just want to say Harbor Heights ended up being more than just an apartment complex. It's a community.
Can you speak into the microphone for us, please?
It's, I'm sorry. It's more than an apartment complex. It's, it's a community. Okay? People are very friendly. It's a nice place to live. My wife and I moved in, in June of 2020, and we kind of moved back to Mystic. We spent 15 summers here on our boat at Brewers, so we know the area, loved it. But anyway, there's a lot about Harbor Heights that people don't think about. It's a diverse community. We have doctors, lawyers, college professors, and even some of us retired folks, because we're the ones that have, we're baby boomers that have downsized, okay, and have found a wonderful place here. Property management staff, top shelf there. The place is well-maintained inside and out. And I just want to say in closing that David does a wonderful job. He put a lot of forethought into the, into design and building of Harbor Heights, and he's a hands-on kind of guy. You can always see him at the facility. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Martin Levin. I'm a retired college professor and administrator from Eastern Connecticut State University. I haven't been a resident here for very long, about a year and a half. After years and years of septic tank backups, raking leaves, shoveling snow, sending kids to school, trees falling down, you name it, my wife and I said, "That's it. We got to get out of here." And so we did. And what happened was, my wife was searching the internet for a place that we could call home and not have to do any of the things that I just mentioned. And she came, she was on the computer, she came running to, to the back room, says, "I found a place. It's called Harbor Heights. Let's go there." It was January of 2020. We came, we donned hard hats, we went through the buildings still in progress. We loved it. We came here at the end of June 2020. We love it here. Everything that Art just said, I agree with. It is a true apartment home. It actually says that on the sign in front of the building. We couldn't think of any place better that we could have chosen. We love it here. And we're going to stay here until somebody gets carried out. So we're here for the duration. I would also like to add that right down the hill, as you all know, we've been talking about it, is the Hartford Healthcare Facility. Both my wife and I found primary care physicians there. I will be seeing, soon seeing another doctor there for the first time. We've used the imaging facilities. It is a blessing to have a facility like that just down the road from us, and to see it expand to include other areas of medicine would just be wonderful. So I support the building of the Hartford Healthcare Facility, as well as the addition to Harbor Heights. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Richard Ball Strassi.
Good evening, Rich Ball Strassi. I'm a resident in Stonington and also the banker that worked with David in the first phase of the project. I always say the, you know, one of the keys to any successful project is even the best laid plans need to have excellent execution. And working with David through the first phase, you really saw that shine through in, in every aspect of the development. He was very hands-on, very detail-oriented, and very concerned to make sure that every aspect of the project fit for both what was in demand for the community, what people were looking for, and then also aesthetically fit with the town, and, and ultimately developing a property that the town would be proud of. Looking at Phase Two now, I can say kind of the banker in me sees the demand in particular. Looking at both the medical facility, the apartments, and the condos that were there, I'd say historically, typically you'd see something in the, the range of double the amount of time that it took for an absorption period. So the rate of the either lease-up or sell-out of the, the units typically would be double, you know, what we saw in, in the first phases of this project. And I think that that really speaks volumes to the demand that's there. So the resident in me says, you know what, we have neighbors that are looking for diverse housing options and medical needs in the community. So, you know, to me, that's something that, that's needed, and I think that the plan that David has presented really fits well with the community, preserves it. Personally, I like the, the preservation of the stone walls, but a number of different aspects there, I think it fits very well in the community. And kind of flipping back to my banker hat, looking at the site itself, having the infrastructure already in place there really goes a long way to seeing the feasibility of a project like this come together. So with that, you know, fully support David in his next venture here. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Good evening. My name is Michael Pace. I am also a resident at Harbor Heights. And I moved up here from New Jersey in January. I sold my business, sold my house, came up here with my wife. Our plan was to stay for six to eight months at Harbor Heights, and then, you know, find a house, a much smaller house, and stay in the area. We have a daughter who lives a few blocks from here, so we're familiar with Stonington township. After living at Harbor Heights for really just a few months, we said, you know, this place is beautiful. This place is nice. They've thought of everything. Great people. You know, we have a pet. There's a lot of pets there. There's a dog park. They even have a place, a section that you can wash your dog in. You know, they have a gym. I like to use the gym almost every day. Great people. They have monthly activities and different things to get people together. My wife said to me just, you know, just a week or two ago, she said, you know, if we had come up here and just bought a house somewhere, you know, we don't really know, except for our daughter, we don't really know anybody, what would we do? You know, we just, you know, it'd be just us, just in this house, you know? And it's like, here we have, we have so many friends already, so many nice people. And it's a diverse community. I mean, you know, we have all, every kind of race and, and religion that you can think of, every, you know, it's just, and people all get along. Everybody's nice. Everybody says hello, as somebody said before. So I, I highly recommend another project like this. I think it would be great for the area, and I'm a fully supporter. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Good evening. How are you today? So thank you for, for listening to all of us at Harbor Heights. We absolutely love our home. I moved down here a year, one year, six months, and eight days ago, and I absolutely love it there. I was just coming back, testing the waters, as I also grew up here. And my mother still lives here for many decades. I was kind of, you know, nervous. It was during the pandemic, so I can't imagine what it was like trying to, you know, rent units at a large complex like that when, you know, everybody's nervous to, to go anywhere. And I remember calling one day, and I was looking for my agent, my leasing agent, Gina, and a gentleman answered the phone, very nice. And I said, "Oh, I'm looking for Gina." And he said, "Oh, well, I'm the developer, David." And I said, "Oh, my God." I said, "What are you doing answering the phone?" I said, "You know, the place is spectacular. I'm moving in. I'm looking forward to it, but I'm really nervous because it's COVID." And the way that they executed people moving in was, was fantastic. And the place is just amazing. Like a lot of these folks have said, most of the people that I met were acquaintances, and now I call them dear friends. And I'm not looking to leave anytime soon. So I'll be there for a while, and I definitely approve the, the next project. I think it's a benefit to everyone in the town. So thank you.
Thank you. Carmine Caslino.
Good evening. Hi, Dr. Carmine Crispino. I'm a physician in the community. And I just moved into Harbor Heights in August. And just speaking from the perspective of my patients, what an amazing facility Hartford Health is. It's right here in Mystic. My patients don't need to go to Hartford. They don't need to go to New Haven. They have specialists right here at their door. The, the addition of, of an additional facility would be tremendous. My, my patients wouldn't have to go far. They can go for their procedures or their consultations and then convalesce at home. In terms of being a resident of Harbor Heights, I've been there since August. It's an amazing facility. I just sold my condo. I want to stay in the area. The market is really tough right now. Thank goodness for Harbor Heights. I was able to, to get an apartment, and I can just imagine another facility, more people coming to the area, contributing to the local economy. I think it would be just a tremendous asset to Mystic. And that's all I wanted to say. And thanks for what we have, and hopefully we can move forward and, and build more. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else in favor of this project? Please state your name and address.
Hello. My name is Kevin Bowdler, and I live at 44 Gold Street in Stonington. I'm also a member of the Economic Development Commission. And we were super excited when we got the presentation for this project, and we voted unanimously to write a letter to support this project to yourselves, and we hope that you'll approve it as, as it is presented. I think many of the issues have already been covered of why we support it. It hits all the boxes for EDC. It's more jobs in Stonington. It's a material impact on the grant list and taxes. And as you probably know, this fiscal year, the, the town budget went up by 2.8 million. So obviously with that, with no development in town, all of us in Stonington will have to pay the additional 2.8 million. And it's rare that we get a project of this size in Stonington. And I think when it does come, if it's in the right location, and where we're largely not taking up the, the green space, I think it's a win-win for everyone, and we economically are going to benefit from it. And I'd encourage you to support this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for in favor.
Good evening. My name is Tim Murray. I live at 12 Geyser Street in Mystic on the Stonington side. I was just listening to everybody, and clearly there is a demand for residential and medical side of, of this project. So, and especially in, in our town, right? Because we don't approve just anything in this town, do we? The last commission approved this because we have a quality project with a quality developer, and that's what Phase Two will be. So I hope you approve it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody speaking against this project? Okay, last call for the speaking against. General comments. Ben Tamski, your leadoff.
Ben Tamski, 5 Edgemont Street in Mystic. I'm, I'm a little bit surprised by the silence from boards and commissions in this town with regard to this project, the Board of Selectmen, the Economic Development Commission, and the Year Planning Commission itself with regard to affordable housing. We just got through this fall a very loud and contentious debate about the lack of affordable housing. I think that you're passing up a really great opportunity here. This started out as a property to support 36 dwelling units. Because of the actions of this board, it's now a very large medical facility, successful medical facility, two successful housing developments, which we've heard a lot of great things about the project. But this type of floating zone or master plan development, we've been told by, the presenting attorneys put you in the driver's seat. And I think that you're in the driver's seat tonight, and I think that you should take the opportunity to consider affordable housing at this site. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Hi, I'm Edward Dear. I live at Stone Ridge. And I have submitted a letter to the commission, but just to read it out, I think the proposal is a great thing, the medical facility and a quality apartment house. But I would ask the commissioners to consider imposing, if you can, some kind of dust control protocol on the building. And the letter that I submitted to you shows photographs of, of dust and particulates coming over from the Lattisori development in 2019. And I don't know whether your authority extends over practices in building, but if it does, I would ask you to stipulate what you can. I have a copy of the letter, Mr.
Okay.
So I'm Janice Mink. And like Ben, I wanted to speak to affordable housing, because we just fought down a referendum, well, with a referendum, we fought down housing in Pocatuck. And affordable housing is housing for teachers and nurses, and, and maybe what you do also, Teresa, I'm not sure what you pay in rent. But I know that we have a problem of affordability. And if we could get a certain percentage of this housing secured as affordable, I think that would be also a win for Stonington. So whatever percentage we need of affordable housing, perhaps we could get that many apartments guaranteed affordable in this development. I think that would be quite reasonable. Instead of building housing always somewhere else, why not start with what we have being built? This is going to be built, I can tell. It's, you know, very good. I practically accept you, expect you to strip off your suit and stand there in a Superman outfit, because, you know, it's been like such a success. But, but that is the missing link for us, the affordable housing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commission. Just, I'll try and keep it in three minutes. It's not my nature, but.
Try. Work with me.
You've already heard tonight from doctors that work at the facility, people who live in Mr. Lattisori's property. You've heard from neighbors across the street. You've heard from businesses downtown. And virtually all of them spoke very highly of this. I think that it isn't very often that you guys get an underhand lob right over the plate for you to knock out of the park. They're usually very difficult, complicated. And having spent five years as Chairman of Planning and Zoning in Stonington, I, I know that it's a challenge to weigh all of the things that, that are brought before you and make sound decisions. Tonight I heard some things that I thought perhaps I could be helpful with. And, and one of the tendencies when you sit on a board is to micromanage and, and try to get outside your lane. And I would encourage you tonight to not get outside your lane. You have an opportunity here because you know exactly here because you know exactly what you're going to get. Somebody says they're gonna build a restaurant. You've never met him before. You don't know what it is. You try and make a picture of what they're gonna do. You know precisely what you're going to get. Because you have the Hartford Healthcare facility that the doctors love. You know, the fact that they have movement disorder doctors, maybe a small thing to you, but it's a huge thing to me because you might have to go to Hartford and if you, I need movement disorder doctors. Going to Hartford or New Haven is a big deal. Now it's right down the street. And literally right down the street from me. I live a quarter mile from it. I've driven down Jerry Brown Road for 30 years. And at the stop sign, I've never had two people in front of me, ever. Had more than two vehicles in front of me. My wife and I own a business in town. And one of the parts that may not have gotten mentioned today that's very important, these are our clients. The doctors, the nurses, the hundred-and-so people that work there, they're our clients. The tenants that are there are our clients. It's an important part of our business and you have an opportunity to virtually double that. And when I say I'd like to see you stay in your lane, would you really put it off for a month or so to give him his approval? Because you're not sure if 12 units per acre, you might turn it down for 15 units per acre. Really? Would you do that? Would you turn it down because you didn't get a picture of what Hartford Healthcare signed? You already have one. They're gonna put another sign on the building that says Hartford Healthcare at 95. Would you really turn it down if you didn't see that sign? The time is money to the business people. Affordable housing. Like I said, my wife and I own a jewelry store in town. And we make beautiful jewelry and we fix beautiful jewelry. But, oh, I'm sorry, three minutes. You're right. But I don't change tires. The applicant is building housing that is not affordable housing. That's not his application. Would you really turn him down if you didn't like the shape of the berm that he has out in front of it? I don't think so. I think that we need this and you should approve it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. That is our list. Oh, we have one more. Excuse me. Your time's up. I had to put it in there. Hello, David.
In case you forgot, I'm David Rathman.
Add you to the list.
You know, I was head of the commission, as you know, five years ago when we approved this. And I never thought that they would get this far, this fast. You know, I knew the Perkins Farm when, the hay barn was where Stone Ridge is. The cow barn was up in the field. I even had to bring my cow up to visit the bull once a year so I could look at.
Let's keep it clean, David.
But you know, David is gonna keep a lot of open space. And I'd like to confess something I think they're blaming on him tonight as much as you could blame on me. When this first development was going, they were working Hartford Healthcare in the middle of the winter, David called me and asked me, "Do you think it's all right if we pile some of the topsoil up on the land rather than carton it off and carton it through Mystic and have the dust, everything go everywhere?" I said, "Sure." Well, I'm a person who likes to see topsoil stay where it belongs. Well, we got, the pile's a little too big. It's about, kinda like mountain, Lattisori now. I think that they can cut it down. But it's just fantastic job he's done. And I know he'll do a great job on this. But, you know, we'd all worked on this before. And we saw what we got. And I think we'll see what we get again. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any other general comments? Mr. Lattisori, would you like some rebuttal time?
I want to say that when I, excuse me, in 2016, when I met with the folks over at Stone Ridge, I was 28 years old. My dad had just passed away a year before. And we thought there was no way we could really keep this farm. And I didn't want to repeat the mistakes of my dad and continue down a dead-end road. And when I thought of all these uses for this site, that master plan, that original master plan, which is the developable area we're talking about tonight, I could put those medical buildings there. It was based off stuff I had seen in the area. It was really kind of a pipe dream. I didn't know what was gonna happen. And you build these things and they start out as dotted lines and you color them in and then you bring the architects in and the engineers and everything else and they become something, right? And it's really here tonight where I see what it's become to everyone else. It's become a home. It's become a place for people to get their medical care, to propose to their boyfriend or girlfriend, to start their family, to get involved in this community. And it all happened because of the courage and the vision of this commission. I do hear the concerns about affordable housing and that would be nice to do on this site. However, the cost of preserving 35 acres as open space cost me $5 million. This project was unfinanceable. And as a 30-year-old, I went to 10 local banks and every single one said, "It's an unproven market. Infrastructure costs are too high. You cannot build it and preserve all that open space." I just got the project approved. That's supposed to be the easiest part. The most difficult part is building it. And I had to be incredibly creative in getting financing and along with that tax payment to make it work. And even then, it barely works. Because we put in $5 million of infrastructure. We put in 3,000 feet of sewer line and water line and plumbing and electrical to service this site. And I didn't want, because this is gonna be in our family, and I'm young, I'm 35, I didn't want to skimp on any of the finishes. Everyone says it's so nice because we didn't sacrifice. I live in this community and I'm gonna hear the responses if I don't build a subpar product. And I think Mr. Sneddon said summed it up very nicely. You know what you're getting. We're expanding the medical. It will look very, very similar. It will be on the most secluded area of the site. The apartments have been enormously successful and we want to continue that and create more services and amenities to our residents. That's also on the most secluded area of the site with limited grading. So the tough work has been done. Over the last five years, we've been working to get to this point, to the most developable piece of the site. There's hardly any grade change. There's no wetland impacts like the other phases. It's not a groundwater protection district. We're already tied into sewer. Supporting infrastructure is there. So although there may be some gaps in the presentation, I think based on what we've produced, I hope you can surmise what we're gonna be producing hopefully in the future. So it really warms my heart to hear these personal experiences. I've had friends who've had medical issues, have gotten them treated. And I've had family members who've moved to this location and have created new connections. And it really warms my heart and that's kind of the personal connection that I think gets lost at sometimes these impersonal hearings. So I hope you have faith in continuing the process and believing in finalizing the campus. Thank you all and thank you all for coming out tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Staff, how you doing over there?
I'm awake.
Do you need a quick break? Are you ready to forge ahead?
I'm ready to touch on a few subjects. In your staff, in your packet, it wasn't part of your staff report because the letters came after the staff report. There are eight letters in favor of this application, one of which is exhibit number three, Mr. Dear's letter. There is additionally a letter of support from the EDC, a letter of support from Father Tom Horr, from Victoria Will Cook, from the Mystic Museum of Art, from Dan Meiser, a local business owner, from Shannon Hanrahan, and from Howard Heronian, M.D. And also, just prior to this meeting beginning, the Board of Police Commissioners emailed me. And they wanted to state the BOPC passes on that there are no issues with safety, traffic, or parking, possibly need for radio enhancement inside building for fire and police communications. And one third thing to address Lynn Conway's concerns about the signage, there is a stipulation proposed by staff, item number seven, signage details for Hartford Healthcare shall be provided and reviewed by the commission as an administrative review item. So in other words, it wouldn't be approved with this application. You'll come back for a separate.
That's it?
There was a very thorough presentation.
Mr. Chairman, I can't say it any better, but it has been said tonight by the many speakers who have come before you, especially Mr. Lattisori himself. My only addition, and it'll be real quickie, is that what made Phase One work was the two aspects of the apartments and the number of the apartments and the medical and the size of the medical. The two go together. What Mr. Lattisori left out when he said it's not easy to put this thing together is the financing. You don't just say, "I want a medical building." You can't finance a medical building without the residential to go with it. And vice versa. Medical is very, very expensive to build. David doesn't build a cheap product as everybody has attested. These two things are compatible. They were compatible in Phase One and they're compatible in Phase Two. And I would ask for your approval on those two projects tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, alternates and board members, we have questions of this professional group that you'd like to catch up on. Covered it all? I'm trying to think if I do.
I guess one question I'd address is whether any open questions that we posed... Do any of the open questions that we posed tonight warrant completing this hearing on December, is it 7th? December 7th? Do we wanna see some of those questions answered before we close the hearing and take a vote?
Yeah, I have a list of hours of operation. Did we ever get an answer to the hours of operation?
I believe it's nine to six.
Nine to six.
Staff may either until later nine o'clock. And the cleaning crew comes in at around 11:00 P.M. Takes around an hour and a half to help to clear it.
And I had a question. Is the land conservation in discussion? Do you have any leads on turning over the open space? Or how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, so currently the open space is governed by a permanent conservation easement. And the goal has always been to give this to an existing land trust. One of the reasons why Land Trust has not wanted to take it to date is because the campus has not been complete. They didn't want to assume any of the open space until all the construction was finalized. In addition, they had concerns about some of the stormwater management areas and how those would be maintained. Obviously, I'm maintaining that per all my service contracts with the site. So I think if we can get past those points and the campus is complete, I think Land Trust will take it.
Do you know which one?
We've always thought it would make, originally, we had Stonington Land Trust and also Avalonia Land Trust interested. And the reason is because we have bought Avalonia Land Trust to the east. So we wanted to continue the trail network over. I know the regional head had supported that, but the town group was not 100% in favor because at the time, construction was not complete. And I will be reapproaching Avalonia Land Trust. However, because these trails also link over to the Nature Center and the Coogan Farm, I think they would be good candidates as well. And I also don't mind contributing money to make sure that it's maintained appropriately into the future.
Lynn, you had some drawings you requested, is that right? A nightscape and a street view from street level, as Chuck wanted also. So I think there are some open, and the berm as built?
Correct.
overlaid over what was designed?
Right.
Is requested?
It's, I have no objection if he wants to change the berm, but it was approved a certain way and it's not built that way. It's clear that anybody that looks at the site...
And I would like that south elevation of the apartment building. Lynn, did you have anything else to address?
Yeah, I guess, you know, to Chuck's comments about the berm, nobody's addressed them. I mean, acknowledged that they're different? Or do you think they're different? Was this a surprise comment? I mean, it's kind of just, you listened, but there's been no output from you. Is there something you can say about it that would maybe complete the thought here of this is in what we, it's approved, this is why, it was approved this way, or whatever?
If the commission were to impose a condition of approval, that the berm would be reviewed by staff, the town engineer, you know, for conformity with the prior approval, you can push that berm around and make it any shape you want. Just tell, if you want to tell us what shape you'd like it to be, we can make it be that shape. This is the topsoil that, you know, Sir Rathman said he likes to see topsoil. We can make topsoil look anything you want. That's easy.
Mr. Lattisori, I honestly am just comparing it to what was shown on the original plan. It isn't our job to design it. You proposed it a certain way. You know, we heard all the wonderful things about this project. It doesn't change my mind that it is a wonderful project. But it should be built in accordance with the plans or you should change the plans, one or the other. Frankly, I don't care which one it is, as long as the town engineer says it's okay and it's on a plan and it's landscaped. But the berm has been discussed extensively in previous commissions. It isn't built according to the plans. It isn't landscaped according to the plans. And it should be addressed, one way or another. And it isn't a showstopper for me on this great project. I want you to know that.
I'm...
I don't mind if it's handled as a condition of approval, but it should be handled. So I don't disagree with you.
I'm happy to hear you like the project.
I do.
That's a good place to start because we can make the berm do anything you want as a condition of approval for the town engineer to, you know, to approve it or staff to approve it. I'd be happy to have that as a condition of approval.
And I'm happy with that.
Okay.
So my other question is, and I may have misunderstood this, so please...
I'm having trouble hearing you.
I know, my microphone keeps on. So I may have misunderstood this, but are you also asking for a change in the number of units that were designated for older persons aged 55 and above?
We're asking for an increase from 12 units per acre to 15 units per acre for unrestricted occupancy. We leave the same 15 units for age restricted, but we want the 15 units so that we can sell those without any age, or sell rentals without any age restrictions, which would, and by combining, by combining the land...
So you didn't address that. Why is that?
Why is that?
Yeah, why are you asking for that change?
Because the limitation of 12 frankly doesn't seem to make a whole heck of a lot of sense. If you allow 15 units per acre for one group, why not allow 15 units per acre for the group that really wants to live there, as you've heard tonight? This is not an age-restricted project. It has young people. It has, you know, baby boomers. It has retirees. It has, you know, currently active physicians. It doesn't make a whole lot of practical sense to limit to 12 units per acre when 15 has already been seen as an appropriate number by the commission in the regulations.
by the commission in the regulations as they're currently written. We want slightly more density to be able to rent to the same mix of people who are living in Phase One. Because that's what funds the medical. Yeah, that's what it boils down to. Everybody wants the medical. Not everybody is enamored with the residential. But it's the residential that makes the medical possible. Always has.
The medical building is not a self-supporting enterprise?
The project as a whole has to be financed. You can't build it, you know, with money out of pocket. You've got to find a bank that will allow you to finance it and get it built. And those two things have to work together to get a bank to finance it. You basically heard that from one of our local bankers tonight as well.
I think it's a cash flow issue that...
It's actually above my pay grade.
Yeah.
I'm not smart enough to do the math on it. But I can fully understand that you've got to have the whole... Somebody calls it a three-legged stool. Well, maybe it's a two-legged stool. But the medical and the residential have to support one another if you're going to find a bank to lend money to build it. And on that, I'll sit down, unless you have any further questions.
No, I don't. Lynn, do you have any questions, more questions?
Mr. Chairman, there was just one more issue that was raised by someone in the audience that lived through the first phase and expressed a concern about dust control.
Yes.
And again, I think that's an easy issue to handle during construction. It only occurs under certain conditions. And we may want to put that in as a condition also that when the project is in, you know, when the slopes are in the raw phase of development, that particular attention should be paid to dust control. The town engineer should have authority to enforce that. But it's easy to control with calcium chloride on the surface and water trucks. And it isn't expensive, so...
Depend on the time of year, too, whether it's dry and windy versus snow.
And if you get rain, you don't have an issue. If you don't get rain, you have an issue. But it's easy to control with water and calcium chloride. And we may want to put that in as an additional condition.
Is that acceptable to the...
Couldn't agree more. Absolutely couldn't agree more.
Okay. On my inclination, at 10:21 P.M., with a lot of discussion on the three big points, zoning regulation amendment, zoning map and master plan amendment, and the site plan application, is going to eat up quite a bit of time. So I'm in favor of continuing this meeting on 12/7 so we can get our south elevation drawing of the harbor heights Phase Two, a berm drawing as built, a dust control condition, I guess we can read that in, a nightscape drawing, and a Jerry Brown Road eye-level drawing. Does that suit you, Lynn?
Perspective, perspective.
Perspective. We now know the hours of operation in the land conservation plan. So be those items. I would like to do this all with a fresh brain at 7:00 rather than at 10:30 to attempt sorting my way through some, okay, pretty detailed...
You're the boss here.
And then we'd also have Keith back with us, I think, at that point, whose insight is very valuable to me. So that's my proposal.
So we would continue the public hearing until December 7th, is what you're saying? Are we in a motion to do that?
Yes, please. With those items I wanted...
So I move that the public hearing be adjourned and continued till 12/7/2021. Do we have to advertise that? Do we advertise that?
Let's continue.
I don't know.
We'd be advertising that meeting anyway, won't we?
It will be at 7:00 in this building for everybody that's here.
Well, I thought you meant in the paper.
Procedure question, if a board member can't make it, one of the alternatives can be seated. Have a conflict on the 7th of December.
Just remember, you close the public hearing so there can't be any more comments. It would just be the discussion.
No, we're not closing.
You're not going to close it, so it's going to be open to public comments.
People could come back and still comment. So what you want?
That's what you want.
So Fred, you said you have a conflict on the 7th?
I do.
I think anyone who's heard this this evening can sit as an alternate. If they weren't here, then we would have a tough...
Right.
I understand, yes. Okay. Yeah, I... That has a point. It might not be... We could have another 20 people say it's a great project. But that's going to take an hour. We've heard a range of comments here tonight. I think we could close the hearing and then just move to...
Just a point from there. A point of order.
I just wonder if you can, if they're going to introduce more...
The public comments section has been closed. If anybody from the public wants to speak on something, they can only speak on any new items that are submitted on the 7th.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Let's get some flavor.
So there's a motion on the floor, right?
I second that one.
Okay. What is the motion right now?
To continue the meeting to 12/7.
Oh, yeah. But to close the public hearing.
I haven't closed that.
Because Candy had said that it can be open for new items.
She's saying you can't close it.
You cannot close the public hearing if you're accepting new evidence from the applicant.
Right.
Okay.
But the public can only comment on material.
So that's how I'd like my proposal.
So I second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on these motions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you. That is it for Mike. Do I hear the motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Hold on before you all take off because I want to make sure you've signed all those other applications.
I think so.
I have them here. Thank you.
So we are adjourned. All those in favor of adjournment? We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.